I'm just doing a head count here visually, alright. Alright, well, good evening and welcome to the Tuolton City Council Regular Council Meeting of January twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. I'll call the meeting to order. Our first item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance led tonight by Councilor Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and Councilor Brooks will continue with the moment of silence for those who have lost their lives to COVID-nineteen.
Um, thank you, Mayor. We, this, we know that there's, um, the latest report is that there's nineteen thousand four hundred new confirmed and presumptive COVID-nineteen cases in the state of Oregon alone, and seventeen new deaths, and for those and all the people who've been impacted or suffering due to COVID and that we've lost, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
With that, that brings up quite a few announcements. We've got several new employees, but we'll start off with our Equity Committee Planning Group recruitment, and I think Betsy is here to chat with us about that. There's Betsy, welcome, Betsy.
Hello, good to be here. Hello, Mayor and Council. Good evening. My name is Betsy Rosario-Schroff. I work as a Community Engagement Coordinator for the city, and I have an exciting update on the council's direction to create an ad hoc Equity Committee. We are calling this the Equity Committee Planning Group, and this will be a temporary committee that will help us to create the structure of the permanent Equity Committee. The application on the webpage went lag today. I'll be sharing when and where folks can apply to be on the committee, and you also have a flyer in your packet with the details. And the Equity Committee Planning Group will be a temporary committee that will help us to create the structure of the permanent Equity Committee, and we anticipate that Equity Committee Planning Group will meet from May to October of this year, six times in the evenings. Um, we're encouraging anyone with an interest to apply, in particular, members of our BIPOC community. Applications can be submitted in multiple ways. We're trying to make it as easy as possible, members of the community to apply, um, apply online. Um, we have paper application forms. I've shared my city cellphone for folks who want to text or call. Of course, I'm bilingual, so you can reach out in Spanish as well. You can submit a video, audio, you can take a picture of the application form, submit it that way, a send in telegraph, however you want to, so that we are accepting. Um, and so applications are due March eleventh, at which point they will go to the council committee and the advisory committees for recommendation. That's the update that we have for you today.
Okay.
If you have any questions.
Yeah, any questions for Betsy? I'm pretty excited to be launching this. Thank you, Betsy, for coordinating it, because, um, most folk, you might not have heard, maybe some folks did, the Washington County Commissioners adopted a land acknowledgement, and that's one of the things that we're going to be tasking this group with, is to review the ones we were presented a few months ago by our community. So we already have some work for this committee to work on, and I encourage folks to apply for it and get ahold of Betsy any way possible. You know, slipping a note under the door, who knows?
However.
If you're interested in applying, please do. Any questions for Betsy?
Well, and I just wanted to acknowledge and thank Councilor Sacco and Councilor Hillier for being on the, for representing the council on this Equity Committee Planning Group.
Thank you both. There's a compliment for today, Cheryl, and here you go. All right, well, thanks, Betsy.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, now we have, uh, we have some new employees. I believe the first is Alec Chung, who's going to be introduced by Jeriann. Welcome, Jeriann.
Hi, excuse me, good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name is Jeriann Thompson, I'm the library director. It, it is my pleasure to be with you tonight and to introduce you to Alec Chung, our new librarian one. Alec's focus in the library is on youth services, specifically for elementary age students. Alec is responsible for developing and delivering programs, outreach to schools, and buying children's books for the library. Alec comes to Tuolton from Eugene Public Library, where he worked as a youth librarian for over five years. Alec grew up in southeastern Washington, and he holds a BA from Western Washington University, as well as master's degrees in library science and children's literature from Simon's University. Alec and his partner Shane are new Tuolton residents, and they've enjoyed exploring the Tuolton River Greenway. When he's not reading print books, Alec often incorporates audiobooks into his other hobbies, which include cycling, crafting, baking, and exploring the beautiful Pacific Northwest. Alec firmly believes that there is nothing more magical than a library card, and he loves connecting kids and families with library resources. Alec is very creative and energetic, and he makes a great addition to our team in the library.
Welcome, Alec, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much for the warm welcome. It's really great to be here. I, as Jeriann said, I love that Greenway so much, I live right next to it and spend for just about every day there with my dog.
All right, well, bring, uh, welcome. As you know already, or will know, that our library is one of the most popular assets of the community, especially the children's reading programs back in the day when we weren't all hunkered down. The reading programs for children were just super packed and look forward for having your new blood, your new energy, and creating programs where, uh, we can get back together more, uh, folks in their room, you know, without all the restrictions we have right now. And public events, uh, the library does a terrific job of getting folks to read both in English and in Spanish, so, uh, very much welcome to you and welcome aboard. All right, next up, Kim McMillan has three new people. Welcome, Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors. I'm Kim McMillan, the Community Development Director, and I'm really excited that we've had a good run of hires. I've got three excellent new folks that have joined us in community development, starting with Cody Field. And Cody's grown up in the northwest. He grew up in Port Angeles, he's lived in the northwest all of his life. Then he graduated, he'll be graduating this spring from Portland State with his master's in public administration. And he, um, is one of those people who likes to work on budget, which I'm excited about. And he's attending all of the regional planning meetings around transportation. And if he's not attending them, my first Steve, they're attending, and they're all coordinating those efforts to get you the information that you need for decision-making around those different efforts that are going on, tolling, tolling, and tolling. So, he has two cats, a dog, he likes to camp, he likes music and movies and cooking, and I'm really glad to have him on our team.
Welcome, Cody, the floor is yours for an introduction.
Hi, yeah, thank you so much for your time tonight. I'm really happy to be here, excited to join the community development team. Shortly before I, I joined the city of Tuolton, I was working on a, a project for the Public Works Department through my PSE program. I was able to leverage my connections there to find this position in Tuolton, and I'm really happy to be here to, and to help out the team and to help out the city.
Well, welcome. As, uh, we heard before in our work session, the number one concern of our residents is obviously transportation and traffic. So, that's what, uh, Kim was saying, that that's what our residents are concerned with in addition to parks. So, looking forward to working with you, uh, the various committees that we all have to serve on between Washington County, Plaquemines County, you know, the meetings that we're going to have with the state, with ODOT, so looking forward to working with you. Welcome. And now you have Suzanne, correct?
Yes, I have Suzanne Tyler, she's our new building official, and so, uh, her responsibility is overseeing our inspectors and plan reviewers, our permanent tax, and then being that liaison of the community, the development community, and our other partner agencies like, uh, Tuolton Valley Fire and Rescue. And she grew up in New York, but she's been out here since nineteen eighty-six, and she's been involved in the building, uh, uh, field for thirty-two years, and some of her hobbies include glass fusing, skiing, and hiking, and she's got a golden retriever and a chocolate lab.
Welcome, Suzanne. Floor is yours. You're muted.
There I am, sorry about that. Thank you, Mayor and councilors, I'm really excited to be a part of the city of Tuolton's team. It seems like there's a lot of really great, intelligent people that I'm able to work with, and I've, um, I've really enjoyed the, the time that I've been here so far. I've got a, a, a background in, um, the building industry. I worked for Washington County and, and the city of Beaverton for almost thirty-two years, and so that's given me a lot of, um, a lot of information to work with, and, uh, and I, again, I'm really excited to be a part of this team.
Well, welcome Suzanne, is also a former New Yorker. And I know I've kept you busy the last few days with, uh, some questions I've been shooting Cheryl's way, and I appreciate the speed of your response, that's terrific, uh, in getting back to folks in our business community, so I very much welcome you on board, and again, look forward to wel, working with you. I think you have one of the toughest jobs, because you're, uh, having to, you know, you're faced to businesses who are going through a permitting process, who sometimes don't like what they have to hear, and, uh, that person who, like, in a role like yours, personnel is important, communications is important, and just working with them and with the city, uh, to make things, uh, more inviting, to have companies relocate here or grow here, um, that's the number one thing for me in my book for, uh, someone in your role, is, um, you know, help us develop our business community, our residential community, and keep it safe, though, and follow our regulations.
Thank you, I want exactly that also.
All right, terrific. Uh, and finally, we have a new engineer, Heidi.
Yeah, Heidi Springer is our new city engineer, and we hired her because we actively recruited her. Jeff mentioned, hey, why don't you call Heidi? She's the only one that could solve this water issue for us. She was an MSA for fourteen years, and so, we poached Heidi, and I'm so happy we did. She grew up in Redmond, she worked in IT, and then she went back to school and got her civil engineering degree at Oregon State. And, uh, she'll be overseeing, of course, capital projects like the Boonsbury Road Water Line, and she's overseeing the team that's doing the sewer lines out there as well, a lot of Basalt Creek work, as well as the Basalt Creek private development work for the subdivision, the affordable housing, and we just saw another big project coming in and out there, so they're in for pre-op. Heidi's going to be busy. She's also busy at home with two boys, and they like to explore the parks and trails.
Welcome, Heidi, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, it has been a pleasure to be at the city of Tuolton since June. I am coming, as Kim said, from fourteen years in the private sector, so this is my first foray into the public sector, and I don't know why I waited so long. It has so many of the things that I loved about my engineering work prior, but also an even closer connection to the people that I hope to serve with better infrastructure. I have been very happy to have Kim McMillan as a mentor who was in this position for many years, and she also built a really strong team. I have a great team, both in community development more broadly and in the engineering department. So, I'm really looking forward to, you know, growing Tuolton in a way that's sustainable and responsible financially, and just helps our community grow stronger.
Well, welcome, Heidi. Back in the day when Jeff was still here, uh, back when I was working on the water project with him, he spoke very, very highly of you, always mentioned you. And then when he, uh, decided to leave the city, um, we had quite a few discussions about you and your abilities and how much he wanted you to attract you to the city, so very much welcome. Uh, she, he said, uh, you know, you were the one, the one, the woman here to, you know, how do you put it? The, in addition to Jeff, you're like, uh, other person who's a super expert on water in the Portland metro area. And so, uh, especially with the upcoming changes with, you know, the filtration and filtering, uh, that from the water at Bull Run, and the, uh, contract that, you know, we always have to renegotiate, and we're starting to, that whole process, I look forward to working with you, because, folks in the community are very interested in their water, and, you know, they're devoted to Bull Run at this point. Uh, so we want to make sure that we can continue to provide quality water from Bull Run and work in partnership with the Portland Water Bureau, especially as this new, uh, filter system comes on board, I think, in the next few months, right? By the end of the year?
Correct, yeah.
Yep, so, all right, well, welcome.
Thank you.
All right, welcome, new folks. Sorry it took a while, but we, it's, uh, we used to have this done in person, you'd have to shake all our hands and stuff like that, so Zoom made it easier for you. All right, so that brings us to public comment, and public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the city council on an item that is not on the agenda tonight. So if you're here to speak about the Plan Tech, the Plan Map Amendment for the Tuolton Heights, this would not be the appropriate time. We'll have, uh, open the floor to comments for folks from the community during the hearing, so, uh, refrain from doing that right now. Uh, but if you have something that's not on tonight's agenda and you would like to speak about it, go ahead, and you have three minutes to discuss your concern with the council. So we have anyone who is wanting to chat with something, uh, about something other than the PMA tonight, because there are a lot of folks who want to talk about the PMA.
We do have one, uh, sign up, that's KJ Lewis on Zoom.
Welcome, KJ.
Hi, everyone, I loved all of those introductions, it's so exciting to, uh, welcome new members of your staff. Everybody sounds just so cool and has such a cool experience, I hope I get to meet them. Um, I'm, good evening, Mayor Boomeck and City Council, my name is KJ Lewis, and I serve as the Municipal Relationship Manager for Republic Services. Your city has franchised recycling and waste hauler for many years. Our site is located at one zero two nine five Southwest River Road in Wilsonville. My purpose for the public comment tonight is to inform the council and the community of Tuolton that our company, along with many others in the state, are continuing to strive for ways to reduce the impact of waste for our customers and the markets that we serve. As you know, recently, there's been a lot of press and interest around what's known as hard-to-recycle items, specifically batteries, light bulbs, clean plastic foam, and discarded or unwanted clothing. Our company, along with others, has been working really hard to determine how we would be able to provide this benefit to our customers in an equitable manner that remains true to the responsibility we have shouldered through these years. This responsibility is how we provide a service for the greatest need in a manner that proves sustainable, compliant with all regulations, and is equitable for, as, for all individuals in our communities. As councilors are aware, in order for our company in the recycling and garbage industry to have the privilege of providing services in Tuolton, the metro region, and the state of Oregon, we are heavily regulated and are required to obtain multiple forms of approvals to operate. As part of this regulation, we pay franchise fees to the city for the privilege of using the streets of Tuolton. It also regulates our prices to your constituents. Those approvals depend on our ability to be completely transparent through many facets of our business, with reporting to include our costs, returns, disposal, and processor destinations. In other words, it's our proof above and beyond that we are striving to do what is in the best interest for the residents and the communities we serve. Our reporting goes beyond just our own analysis, but involves regulators routinely inspecting our sites, ensuring that we are operating within the boundaries of our submitted plans to DEQ, and abiding, adhering to Metro's regional waste plan and other requirements that the average person might not think of. Specific to recycling or reuse in recent years, Oregon has been on the forefront of looking at this, not just through the lens of how we divert from landfills, many of which nowadays have been, uh, changed or structured to convert methane gas created into electricity to put back into the system. But there's also been a real focus on the lifecycle analysis of, of a product versus just focusing solely on the recycling and reuse of that product. This analysis evaluates the overall impact of the environment, looking at not just the benefit from diversion from the landfill, but asking questions such as how much greenhouse gas emissions are used to transport that diverted material to a new destination? How much energy is used to create or reuse or remake, um, the product, such as the age-old question of water bottles versus reusable bottles or paper bags versus plastic? So how much energy is used to create the product is really being looked at by our state. Another thing to note, along with SB five eighty-two that I spoke to you about before the Recycling Modernization Act, the state of Oregon is also looking at truth in labeling legislation to address consumer confusion about recycling, placing more of the responsibility on the producers of the plastics that we recycle. We are very active participants in this truth in labeling conversation, and we are proud, we are proud to be so, to do so. As I mentioned earlier, we've been working with Washington County and others on a path forward on how we can responsibly provide an alternative solution for materials mentioned earlier that is sustainable, affordable, accessible, and equitable for the public. We take this very seriously to ensure we are offering a benefit to the public that serves the environment as well as promotes equitable options for all citizens. I would expect we'll be able to provide updates and alternatives for the residents of Tuolton in the very near future that also ensures these options serve in the best interest of the city and the community, as we've done for years. Our employees, it should be noted, are highly skilled and paid above a living wage. The driver that visits your home has a CDL license and a great starting wage, and we treat our employees like family. And I know all of you care a lot about your drivers, as we spoke about before in other meetings, and they care about you. On behalf of the many employees that serve and live within Tuolton and the surrounding area, I thank you, council, the residents, and the businesses of Tuolton for the privilege to serve your needs and the needs of each of your constituents. Thank you.
Yes, KJ. Uh, any other folks you know are aware of base?
Uh, not about this subject, Mayor.
All right, so if there's someone who, uh, because the screen is quite full, uh, go ahead and give a shout out if you want to discuss something that's not on agenda tonight. I'll give you a few more seconds if you're just popped in. All right, with that, I'll now move on to our consent agenda. Consent agenda items are, if those things are considered routine, they'll be adopted by one motion unless someone in the council would like an item removed and heard separately later tonight. The consent agenda tonight consists of six items. Item number one, consideration of approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of January tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Item two, consideration of resolution number five five eight nine dash twenty-two, authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Washington County in support of the countrywide, countywide transit study program or project. Item number three, consideration of resolution number five five nine two dash twenty-two, awarding a contract for the Tuolton River Greenway Trail Extension construction documents and professional services to Alto Planning and Design, Inc. Item number four, consideration of resolution five five nine four dash twenty-two, authorizing an amendment to a services agreement with Murray Smith, Inc. for the Tuolton Moving Forward Bond Program, and authorizing the city manager to execute the amendment. Item number five, consideration of resolution number five five nine six dash twenty-two, authorizing the city manager to execute a collective bargaining agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, ASME, Local four twenty-two. And finally, item number six, consideration of the Systems Development Charge Annual Report for fiscal year two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one. Would any councilor like an item removed with consent, and consent, and, uh, looked at later on tonight? All right, seeing none, do have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as read, any discussion on the motions? Seeing none, Councilor Reyes.
I couldn't find the button, sorry, I lost the mute button, then I couldn't find it, but yes.
Okay, Councilor Brooks.
Aye.
Councilor Hillier.
Aye.
Councilor Pratt. Councilor Sacco.
Aye.
Council President Grimes.
Aye.
And I vote aye also, it's unanimous. All right, moving on to our next item, that is a public hearing, which is quasi-judicial. This is, uh, in consideration of approval of a Plan Map Amendment, PMA twenty-one dash zero 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 one, adoption of ordinance number one four six four dash twenty-two, to rezone the Tuolton Heights apartment site located ninety-three oh one Southwest Sagard Street, tax map two S one two three DC, tax lot six hundred, from the medium-low residential, or RML zoning district, to the medium-high density residential, RMH zoning district. And since this is a quasi-judicial hearing, I need to read, uh, some required verbiage from the state. Uh, so the state legislature requires the following information to be read for ORS one nine seven seven six three five and six, and ORS one nine seven seven nine six three B. Item number one, the applicable criteria for this decision are as follows for TDC one dot zero three two. Granting the amendment is in the public interest. The public interest is best protected by granting the amendment at this time. The proposed amendment is in conformity with the applicable objectives of the Tuolton Community Plan. The factors listed in TDC one dash zero three two four were consciously considered. The Tiger Tuolton School District Facility Plan was also considered. The amendments were consistent with the statewide planning goals. The amendments are consistent with the Metropolitan Service District Urban Growth Management Functional Plan. And granting the amendment is consistent with the level of service F for the PM peak hours, and E for the one-half hour before and after the PM peak hour, for the Town Center twenty forty design type, TDC map nine dash four, and E slash E for the rest of the twenty forty design types in the city planning area at seven. Item number two, testimony and evidence must be directed toward the above criteria, or those criteria in the Development Code, which you believe apply to this decision. If additional documents or, or evidence is provided in support of the application, any party should be entitled to a continuance of this hearing. Item number four, unless there is a continuance before the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, a participant may request before the hearing is closed that the record remain open for at least seven days after this hearing. Item number five, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the council and the parties in opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. The failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions for approval with sufficient specificity to allow this council to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Item number six, the hearing will begin with a presentation by the city staff for, presentation of the city staff report, followed by testimony on behalf of the applicant and supporters of the applicant. Next follows the evidence against the application. Rebuttal will be then permitted. After evidence is received and the hearing, the rehearing will be closed, and the council will deliberate towards a decision. Any tentative decision will be reduced to a final written decision and adopted by council, usually at its next meeting. If any councils, councilors, uh, wish to announce any potential conflict of interest, bias, or ex parte contact, please do so now. Uh, I'd just like to state, uh, I don't know if it's really ex parte communication, but I want it on the record anyway, that several months ago, I was approached by residents of Tuolton Heights Apartments, uh, during the public meeting phase of this process, with concerns about parking and their opposition, uh, to, uh, increasing the amount of cars that might end up in the neighborhood. I didn't promise to do anything at that point, but it was just informational, and they wanted to let me. to let me know where they were at with that, with this change in density. Comments or disclosures that are needed. All right. So with that, we'll go ahead and start with the city's presentation of the application. I see Steve.
Thank you, Mayor Beben. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilor Steve Cooper, Assistant Community Development Director. Actually, I'm going to turn it over to Keith Leonard. He's a relatively new associate planner, and he's going to lead us through the presentation. And of course, we'll both be available for questions that the council may have at any point.
Welcome, Keith.
Thank you. Let me share my screen here. Sorry about that. Okay, everybody see that? Very good. So yes, my name is Keith Leonard. I'm an associate planner here with the city of Tuolton, came from Newburgh. I'd like to introduce the PM staff report for PMA 21-0001, all the exhibits and attachments into the public record. Additionally, we received two submittals by the applicant on Friday, which are in your packet. The first one was their presentation, and the second one is specifically regarding the parking. They did a survey of local, other apartment communities, so, and they'll discuss that in more detail. So the applicant is Angelo Planning Group, Frank Angelo, and the property owner is United Dominion Realty. And the request is to rezone the subject property from medium-low density residential to medium-high density residential. This would be a plan amendment, a plan, a map amendment. So any sort of development would go on there, would still have to go through architectural review. This is not an approval of the proposed development. This is only for the results. Here's subject property, so bordered by railroad tracks to the north, and to the west, the subject property is bordered by southwest 95th Avenue, and to the east is southwest 90th, and to the south is southwest Sagert Street. The current zoning is RML, and I'll just generally describe the surrounding zoning. To the north and to the west, you have industrial zone property, and to the south, and to the east, you have residential zone property. It's kind of sandwiched in the center. So this is the conceptual plan, and I'll just touch on it briefly. The applicant is proposing one new building, one new building here and one new building here. They are going to make some adjustments to the parking, they're going to be moving some recreational or outdoor amenities up into this area, and then there will also be a emergency exit for only TVFNR on this area. TVFNR made that request. So the plan amendment criteria is found in Tuolton Development Code, Chapter 33.070. The criteria, I'm just going to touch on, on some of it, I'm not going to cover all the criteria. But as far as qualifying this as a recommend, recommending approval for this, demonstrating that the criteria is met, you have to look at Chapter 3 in the comprehensive plan. There are a number of goals and objectives that the applicant has met. Additionally, there's some strategic action items specific that are applicable to this project to be evaluating opportunities to increase development densities to address deficiencies identified in the housing needs analysis. You'll be familiar with that, that was done in 2019. And secondly, evaluate opportunities, rezone land to provide additional opportunities for multiple-family housing. And the rest of the analyses and findings are going into greater detail of how these requirements are met or criteria. This is actually from the 2019 housing needs analysis. I'd like to point out that there is a deficit, if you look under the category for medium-low density, there is a deficit of, or a surplus of, I'm sorry, the medium-low density category, there is a surplus of 315 units and also a surplus of 27 gross acres. For the medium-high density, on the other hand, there's a deficit, there's a deficit of 109 units and deficit of about seven acres of land in that category. And that's kind of the highlights of this table. And at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Bill Beers, he's the Planning Commission Chair, for his recommendation.
I actually have to apologize, counsel, it looks like Chair Beers was not able to make the meeting. I understood he would be here, so something must have come up last minute. And so we'll just present the planning commission's recommendation of approval. I will just add a little bit of context to, based on their discussion in arriving at their recommendation of approval, they definitely had concerns about impacts to some of the neighboring residential properties to the south in particular. And one of the discussion points with the planning commission particularly had been encouragement of the, of the neighborhoods of the south to explore formation of a permit parking district to help mitigate for that impact. And so, you know, that was something that Chair Beers would have wanted to share with you all. And so, again, apologies that he's not here to deliver it in person. And with that, that'll conclude our presentation. Obviously, approval of the PMA itself and then adoption of the ordinance would enact the actual zone change. Keith and I are both available for questions.
Right, so at this point, I'll go ahead and ask the applicant to present their case
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Keith, do I share screen and put up my presentation? Okay. How was that? Good. Okay, good. Let me see if I can do this to make it full screen, okay? Let me actually escape. Yeah, okay. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Frank Angelo, the Angelo Planning Group, representing the property owner UDR with us. In the audience today is our couple members, representatives from UDR. We also have Matt Hugard with Kittleson and Associates, who will, during the presentation, discuss both parking and the transportation, transportation planning rule assessment, and John McGrew with Henneberry Eddie Architects, who has done the conceptual plan work on this project itself. Let's see. Okay, the existing site, it's another area of the site showing the location on Sagert between 95th and Sagert and the rail lines. The current number of units on the property are 220 multifamily units.
Frank, I'm going to stop you for a sec.
Yes, sir.
You may want to start your presentation, we're still in view and designed.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought I was able, so you're not seeing that, are you?
Frank, I think you're seeing, I think we're, if you have two screens, we're seeing the screen that's intended for you, we're not seeing the presentation screen, so we're seeing the upcoming slides.
How do I do this then? I'm sorry. How about that? Let's see, does this work?
So.
You might want to, if you go into Zoom, there's different screens, they say share, you might want to change which one you're sharing.
Okay.
Frank, would you like me to share the presentation?
That would be good, if you would, Emma. Should I get out of here? Yeah, stop sharing, okay. I apologize for that.
The magic of Zoom makes everything a little bit more difficult.
Yeah, well, I thought I had it right too, you know, I just was practicing it myself and everything, so anyways, how's that?
Are you seeing the correct screen now?
Okay, so, yes, I can see the screen, Emma, Emma Porcola with my office is helping us, so, again, appreciate being here, sorry for the technical glitch. Next slide, please, Emma. Is that it? Can you see that? Okay, good, good. Again, the location of the Tuolton Heights apartment with 220 multifamily units. Important point is that UDR has owned the property and the apartments for almost 25 years, had been a long-term owner of the site itself, and the current zoning is, as Keith mentioned, residential medium-low, the site size is a little over 22 acres.
Next slide, please.
So in terms of background, the proposed plan amendment would be from going from residential medium-low, RML, to residential medium-high. The applicant believes that this will allow a more, much more efficient use of the site, and it provides additional housing, multifamily housing on the site to meet the demonstrated need that was discovered in your housing needs analysis for residential medium-high properties, or, yes. And the infill on the existing Tuolton Heights site could provide up to an additional 116 units, which would address the deficit that you currently have in the residential medium-high designation. Next slide, please. This is a map showing the current zoning, with a maximum density of 10 units per acre. The maximum site density is 224 units, as I said, there are 220 units there today. Next slide, slide. And looking for the proposed zoning, residential medium-high density, going to that, up to 15 units per acre, with a maximum site density of 336 units, and that's the maximum on the property. Next slide, please. We also did a comparison of the two zones, the existing zone and the proposed zone, from the perspective of the development standards and dimensionals features. The residential medium-low and residential medium-high are identical in terms of front, setback requirements, lot coverage, as well as maximum height, maximum structure height. There's no difference between the two zones in terms of these development standards. The only difference is the maximum density that's allowed on the site. Next slide, please. This is the existing site plan. The main access is down at the bottom of the drawing, Sagert Road, you see the office, then the circulation pattern within the existing site itself. Next slide. This is the conceptual plan that Keith showed, but I do want to emphasize conceptual at this point. This has been a, an effort to see how the units could fit, potentially fit on the site. So this is really not an architectural and engineering design developed plan that would come at a later date during the architectural review process, and I think would also include, in addition to the new units, some upgrades to the overall site itself. And as Keith pointed out, the new fire access that TVFNR has requested is shown up in the upper left-hand corner of the property itself. So this would be the site with the 336 units. I would note that the intent really is to make the new building internal to the site and away from the property lines, so there would be minimal, if any, visual impacts from abutting properties. Next slide, please. As Keith noted in his presentation, the city did a housing needs analysis in 2019, and that I did, did identify the need for multifamily development opportunities. He noted that there is a surplus of dwelling unit capacity in the RML designation of 315 units and a deficit of 109 dwelling units in the RMH designation. So there is a lack of medium-high density zoning in the city. Approval of this plan map amendment would basically eliminate the deficit of 109 dwelling units in the RMH district and would not negatively impact the availability of housing in the RML designation. So it helps for more efficient use of property as well as meeting needs for some higher-density housing in the city of Tuolton. Next slide, please. The plan map approval criteria, the mayor and Keith both went through this during their opening remarks. We have submitted an application that the planning commission found we demonstrated compliance with the plan map amendment approval criteria, and that led to their recommendation for approval of this request. Next slide, please. And what I'd like to do is turn this over to Matt Hugard with Kittleson and Associates to discuss the parking study as well as the traffic, transportation study. I would note before we start that we did hold a neighborhood meeting via Zoom, it was a virtual neighborhood meeting mid-year last year, about 20 people showed up for that effort, and we did hear a lot of comments regarding on-street parking. That led us, as the applicant, to prepare with Matt's help, the on-street, the parking study that he's about to show you the summary of. So was there, actually, this, this came out of response to the neighborhood's concerns, so we wanted to document and do a study that shows the, the parking situation as it is. So let me turn it over to Matt for the next couple of slides, and I'll take it back.
Good evening, everybody. Matt Hugard with Kittleson and Associates, representing the applicant on transportation-related issues. Emma, if you don't mind, can you advance one slide and I'll come back for the parking study? Yeah, so I just want to, I'll keep this as brief as I possibly can. As far as the rezone application goes, one of the requirements was to perform a special kind of traffic study that addresses Oregon's, what they call the transportation planning rule. That's essentially a kind of a theoretical 20-year study that looks at the maximum development impacts under the existing zoning, and then you also look at the maximum development impacts under the proposed zoning, and determine if, if by going from existing to proposed, you have a significant, what they call a significant transportation impact on the system that wouldn't otherwise be there if you weren't proposing the rezone. So we did that study, looked at a number of intersections that we scoped with city staff, and analyzed the before and after conditions with and without the rezone. And for the most part, all of the intersections that we looked at were found to operate within the current operating standards that either the city of Tuolton or Washington County imposes on, on its system, with the exception of one intersection. So basically, what we found is, at the intersection of Sagert and Boons Ferry Road, with the rezone, we would have slightly worse traffic operating conditions than what we would have otherwise if we weren't proposing the rezone. And so, we worked through that, that issue with city staff, and it was basically concluded that the, the traffic impacts, the future traffic impacts of that intersection, while they're, while they're projected to be slightly worse with the proposed rezone, they would have been pretty significantly bad even without the rezone. And so, what it was, what was generally concluded was that the intersection is basically going to fail with or without this proposed rezone. And so, the city, and Steve can talk about this in more detail if you have additional questions, but it looks like the city is going to go ahead and put an intersection improvement for Boons Ferry and Sagert onto the CIP list, the Capital Improvement Plan. an intersection improvement for Boons Ferry and Sagert onto the CIP list, the capital improvement plan. And then that project will get funded like other projects within the city when transportation issues and needs need to be met. So as it relates to the rezone, I believe that the traffic study that we submitted has already been fully approved and signed off on by city staff, and that there are no other transportation-related modifications on the larger transportation system that would be needed to support the rezone. So Emma, if you can go back to the parking study, I'll hit upon that for a second. So as Frank noted, a couple of the early comments that we received with our neighborhood meetings was the concern for off-site parking that's occurring along Sagert Street, 93rd Avenue, and Apache Drive. So what we did voluntarily was go out and try and understand the significance of that parking. It was really a fact-finding exercise more than it was anything else. We heard about the issues, so we went out and tried to collect some data and understand what it was that was going on on the system. So we looked at it in two perspectives. One, we captured the parking demands within Twalton Heights, the Twalton Heights apartment complex itself. So we went out there on a midweek day in July of 2021. Also, we went out there on a weekend day in July of 2021, and went out for kind of the hours of the day that are most significantly parked. So if you just look at a neighborhood, mostly the on-street parking and the parking needs are highest in the early morning hours, so 5:00 AM, 6:00 AM. People haven't gotten up yet, started to go about their day, go to work, school, whatever. And then they're also high in the evening period. So we basically went out there on an hourly basis and measured how much demand each of, how much demands the Twalton Heights parking complex or apartment complex was generating, just within the complex itself. And we generally found that the, the, the complex has adequate parking. It's not overparked, meaning that there are extra spaces available even during those key parking hours that I mentioned earlier. So depending upon the day and the hour, it's anywhere from 70 to 80-ish percent occupied. So that leaves about 20, 20% of the onsite parking available for resident use. Now, all that means is that it just wasn't being parked at the hours and the days in which we analyzed it. But I think can generally conclude that it's not a situation where the apartment complex itself is so overparked that it's likely that their, you know, their demand is going elsewhere. So to counter that, we also looked at the on-street parking along Sagert Street. And it's in the little image there, it's all those little yellow dots on the south side of Sagert. There is no on-street parking allowed along the north side. But all those little dots along the south side of Sagert represent an available parking space along the curb. Then we also looked at the parking along 93rd and Apache and did the same thing we did for the Twalton Heights apartment complex. Went out there during those key time periods, tried to understand what was going on. And as far as Sagert Street goes, a lot of the issues that we heard from the neighbors were verified. The on-street parking along Sagert Street was almost 100% full, anywhere from 90 to 100% full during those key study periods. What the study wasn't able to conclude to any level of specificity was who that parking was actually from. Was it from spillover from the Twalton Heights apartment complex? Or was it just the neighbors along Sagert Street parking their own vehicles? We don't know. But we essentially found that most hours of the day, the critical hours, that the parking along Sagert Street is mostly occupied. Not so much along 93rd and Apache. The on-street parking there is much more plentiful and wasn't as heavily utilized during those time periods. So I think the general conclusion was with regards to parking, that yes, there is, you know, a high demand for parking within the Twalton Heights apartment complex, but there's still adequate or excess parking according to the hours and the days in which we studied it. And then with regards to off-site on-street parking, the parking along Sagert Street was mostly occupied during those time periods. And then the parking along Apache and 93rd was fairly underutilized during those same time periods. So I think that's basically what we found. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I think in general, it shows that there are areas and times in which parking is heavily utilized, and there are areas and times when it's not. So I'll leave it at that. And that concludes my part of the presentation.
Thank you, Matt. And still on the subject of parking, as Keith noted, we did submit some additional information for this hearing, a memo from myself to city staff on January 20th. During the planning commission hearing, the chair, I believe, raised a question about the charges. There is a monthly charge for parking for additional spaces. So what the, what the project team did was, and is reflected in the memo, is look at six apartment complexes within a mile of the Twalton Heights apartment to see what kind of parking policies they have in place, and were they similar to the Twalton Heights parking? So the policy at Twalton Heights Apartments for parking is each apartment home comes with one assigned permitted parking space. And this parking space is located in close proximity to the apartment home. A second assigned parking space is available upon request and rents for $25 a month. And there are nine signed guest parking spaces for the complex. And a virtual permit is required obtained by scanning a QR code on the sign. So that's the policy on Twalton Heights. The applicant did canvas six other apartment complexes, Shahalum Apartment, Fox Meadows, Todd Village, Twalton Meadows, Arra at Hedges Creek, and Martinozzi Village, to see what they had in terms of their parking policies. And it ranges from one, in the case of Shahalum Apartments, one assigned space is free, but they have zero additional spaces. So any additional spaces at that site are on-street. Two, two, four, excuse me. Three, yeah, three other apartment complexes that charge upwards of $55 a month for a second parking spot. So charging for a second parking spot is a fairly typical standard for apartment complexes in the city of Twalton. And that's in the record. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, the applicant does agree with the staff recommendation as well as the planning commission recommendation that we've met the criteria in for a Plan Map Amendment. We do support the recommendation to add the Sagert-Boons Ferry Road intersection to the city's capital improvement program list. And with that, I would say I appreciate your time this evening. We are, we have the full team here for questions and are ready to address them if you have any. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Angelo. So at this point, I'll open the floor to persons who wish to testify in favor of the applicant's proposal. Do we have anybody there, Bates, or that knew of, who's in support?
Can we ask questions first?
Questions are later. After we do the Q and A, after we do this, there'll be questions.
Mayor, I don't have a, I have three people who've notified me that they'd like to speak up, but not whether they're pro or con on this subject.
So open the floor to those folks who would like to testify in favor of the applicant's proposal. All right. Hearing none. Folks who oppose, excuse me, the folks who are opposed to the applicant's proposal and Bates, I'm going to assume that those are the three people you're aware of.
I will assume we'll start with Scott Bauer has signed up.
Mr. Bauer, welcome.
Hey, guys. How you doing? Appreciate your time. Thanks, Matt, for the update on the parking and Frank. So a little background, I've lived here for almost three years. What I can say is when I moved in, parking was still similar, one spot per unit. But we had open spots, and it was kind of first come, first served. Obviously, they want to, I don't know, Frank, if you represent UDR, to probably build a little bit of revenue by charging additional spots. So Matt, I think you said nine guest spots. I think it's actually more like six. Most of the, I think the other three or four are like commercial vehicles only. So if you just simply do the math, we have 220 units currently with six guest spots, which, oh, by the way, you cannot even reserve for than a 24-hour period within a week without getting risked and towed. So as far as your study, Matt, on occupancy in the Twalton Heights parking, the reason that it's 70 to 80% appears to be ample is because people don't want to spend the extra money to pay for an extra spot. So therefore, those places are not being consumed because they don't want to have the risk of being towed, which we have onsite towing, and we've seen multiple cars throughout, throughout the months being towed away. Secondly, and I'm not sure when, you know, obviously this is a high-level proposal, and I can respect that. Adding an additional 120 units, was there any thought into the recycling and the garbage waste management portion of the facility at all? That's a question for Frank. Currently, every, we have a decent compactor and about seven recycling bins. And every garbage day, you can barely even get into the area to even recycle or put your trash in the garbage. So adding an additional 130 residences, I'm a little perturbed at how that's going to work with the way the garbage recycling issue is already. Just wanted to point that out. Lastly, you know, again, we're adding close to 132 new units. It comes with one spot per. I'm confident that your studies would show that most, given the rent prices in Twalton and Portland area, most apartments are usually rented by people with at least two vehicles. So the fact that we're adding, you know, we're demolishing garages where people are storing stuff and just adding covered parking, which is about proportionate to the number of units, it certainly doesn't make any room for overflow for a two-house or a two-car household. And just something to consider. Lastly, you mentioned alternate parking. I can tell you for sure that the reason that Sagert is full is because of Twalton Heights, especially in the summertime, because people sneak into the pools all the time. And as far as the options of the other two roads that are there, there's really not any real parking area. Sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but the street directly across from the entrance to Twalton Heights, it's actually almost like a one-lane road. There's a few other spots up the way. That coupled with we're directly in a school zone, you know, right around the corner with Twalton Elementary, is the reason we have all that congestion. So I don't know. I just wanted to point that out. Lastly, and I don't know if you guys can answer this question, but what's the timeframe for actually doing all of the construction at this point? I mean, obviously, we have to get past this rezoning if that's what we're going to do. But just knowing, again, how crowded and congested the area is, I can only imagine, you know, with all the debris and you know, moving two pools into one and demolishing garages, what that's going to look like around here before that overflow during that construction process. So I just kind of wanted to know the timeline if you can provide that.
Thanks, Mr. Bauer. Bates, who's our next?
Next up is Jim Keel, Mayor.
You got it right the first time. Keel, thank you so much, Bates. Mayor and City Council, appreciate your time. I just wanted to, I'm a resident. I've been born, raised, and bred Oregonian myself. I've been a resident of this neighborhood. I'm in one of the houses across the street from the apartment. And really want to appreciate Scott's comments. He really has nailed a lot of the points. So I'm going to try and emphasize a few others, but really appreciate his insights, and they're spot on. So I've been here, like you said, about seven years. And right from the start, I've noticed, and early on, the parking was okay, but the last three or four years, the parking has just gotten worse and worse and worse. And it's gotten to the point where I struggle to just get my garbage cans and my recycling bins and things to have my services done, that public services, you know, pay for, to have that done, because I can't have a place to put my garbage cans. And before I go too further, I did want to mention that there's a lot more of us residents that would be part of this, but this wasn't communicated very well. I got a flyer and it said 5:00 PM, but I didn't know this is going to be at 7:00, 7:30. So I assure you, we have a lot more people here right now talking about this right now. So I'm really disappointed, to be honest, with the communication of this. I think that we could have had a lot better dialogue and a lot more folks involved in inclusivity, as I'm sure you would all want. So I do want to mention that, too. But anyway, back to the parking side of it. People, I can 100% guarantee, what I see, because I can see them across the street, folks come over, they park their vehicle. That's what they do. Scott's hit right on the head. I see it. I have an office here. I've been here for two years in this virtual environment, so I get the chance to see it. And I 100% guarantee you, that's where they're coming from. I don't keep my vehicles out there. They're in my driveway. I'm in a black lot, so I can't put my cans there. So therefore, I got a problem. I'm not alone. There's a lot of other residents who are having these struggles. We have folks that are blocking driveways. We have folks that are blocking the, the actual mailboxes. We have folks that are blocking trailers. We're trying to get out. My neighbor has that problem. So it's been an ongoing problem. It's just getting worse and worse. So it was incredible to hear that we were going to add an additional 109, 115 spaces and add additional parking limitations to this, when we already have the problem. Like, I really want to come to you, Mayor, and ask to fix it now, not add to it or compound the problem that's already here. And I, I mean, I don't fault the folks in the apartments doing what they got to do if they have to pay for it. And I was curious about that. So Scott really provided a lot of insights, and I now understand what's going on there. So it's a problem. And it's already very congested during peak times during rush hour and whatnot. We already have a lot of cars on this road. You're just going to add to that. I do see in the configuration we currently have, that you have the one entrance. Just a solution, because I don't like to just come with problems, but I want to come with a solution. Look at that other opening we have on the other side on 95th. And then you have that as an emergency. That could be maybe a main avenue to come in and out. And then put parking on 95th on that street where it's commercial. Because right now, what you have is you have residential, single-family homes, and then you have apartments. And you're just cramming more stuff in there. And it doesn't feel much like a neighborhood anymore when you start doing these types of things. And that's what we all want. The last thing I wanted to mention is that the, the amount of noise, it just tends to get more busy with more cars. It's already pretty busy. And it's not as big an aspect, but I do want to emphasize that's there, too. You know, speeding, those types of things. So in conclusion, I really think that this parking is a significant problem. And that it's not going to be solved with what's been presented right here, I assure you. There has to be some major thought put into it. The permitting, for example, that was proposed, I'm really curious what, what that means. Now, it sounds like a great idea, but who's getting into permitting? How does one acquire a permit? Those types of things would be really important to know. Because in the end, we just want to be able to have the ability to put our trash cans out and not have our mailboxes blocked, and be able to get in and out of our driveways without having to talk to someone about it. And again, I don't fault the folks in the apartments for doing that, because clearly they got a problem over there. But it's just leading into us. And to add to it more residential neighborhood or more high-density neighborhood, I don't think it's a good solution. It's exacerbating the problem. That's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor, next up is Alisa Wilson Coleman.
Welcome.
Hi, welcome. Thank you, Mayor, Council. You got my flyer. Good for you. And Jim, thanks. I would have been able to put out more flyers, but I got sick. The reason I came upon this situation was because I work in social work. Housing is very, very high on the list and should be high on the list to provide for people. I work with people who are homeless in our community and have I work with people who are homeless in our community and have done it for six years volunteering and helping people get into housing. This is my home too. Um, we have one green spot which the kids play. That is out my back door. I've lived here three years and it becomes a community spot for everybody. We don't have that at all in this neighborhood for this many families and individuals. So we've got also a new house on the corner of Ninety-Fifth and Sagard. Pretty blue house, but now we're having more houses built behind it. So big giant trees have come down. That's going to include more parking on the street. As you've heard here, we've got six visitor spots for our visitors out of two hundred and twenty apartments right now. So I'm gonna jump to the human behavior part of my question in having a hundred and sixteen more homes put in this tiny spot. Yes, you are gonna make it three levels, but look at the statistics. Right now, we are behind in getting intakes for addiction and mental health. Two to three months because of COVID and what's going on. You're asking us, even if there was only two people in each of those apartments, we're gonna have an increase. We're gonna have an increase of domestic violence, of crime, of mental health. And how is our city services going to be impacted? We already have on Nyberg, a really nice community being built with, I think, four hundred apartments. I could be wrong. So our city is growing and has been growing really fast over the last two to three years. But I'm concerned, I have a great parking spot by a tree and it's got a great post right in front of it. It says, "Permit parking only." I've had to have three posts. I parked behind people who have been in my spot until they come hours later to collect their car. I've also had people sit there and smoke a news dress. So I am concerned not only about the parking, I'm concerned about our neighborhood and I'm concerned about the added city resources that are going to be needed. Then we look at the construction. We don't have a lot of places to park anyway. So we're demolishing garages, as Scott said, and building a three-story apartment complex. How are we, who pay our rent, going to navigate through that mess? What are we going to, are we going to get refunded for our garages and having to put our stuff in storage and park our car offsite completely? These are questions and concerns that I have. Thank you so much for your time.
Um, Mayor, the last person who's notified me is Nicole Triple.
Nicole, you're welcome.
Hi, hi. Sorry, my video is not working. Um, thank you for hearing us. Uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for taking the time. Um, I, uh, actually was very concerned about, um, not hearing from the neighborhood residents outside of Toowalton Heights. I'm a Toowalton Heights resident for the last, uh, three, almost four years. And I, um, only got this flyer, um, just the other week posted on my door. Um, we didn't get any emails from our complex, which usually they communicate via email, so I thought that was a little strange. But even on top of that, with the flyer, it was a little bit confusing as to why, um, no email address was listed when it said who we could communicate, which that was a little weird that we had to look that up ourselves in addition. Um, it was pretty vague. Um, I feel like Scott did a really good job on summing up a lot of the concerns that are going on right now. Um, one of the main concerns I had when I was listening to the planning was, um, why would, seeing that there's, uh, Toowalton Elementary right there, why would they do a, a research on the streets and the parking during the summer in July? Um, when school is likely out of session, there's going to be less traffic, um, going through that area. Maybe people are on vacations. I was just a little bit confused as to why that study would be done in July versus, you know, the rest of the year. Um, on top of that, uh, right now, when we're talking about the parking lot being completely full, we're also talking about the line spaces that are for, you know, generally for disability or for, um, uh, entrance to the apartment building. A lot of times we don't have, even if there's cars completely parked outside, they are parked in spots in our complex that they aren't supposed to be parked and we can't do anything about that in addition. I constantly have one of my neighbors that is parking in the line spaces, blocking the entrance to, to, um, my building and it happens in buildings all around me. So if we're having, uh, congestion inside of our complex, I can only imagine and I can, you know, personally see the congestion and the problems that are happening for our neighbors outside of the complex. Like, I can't even imagine how frustrating that must be for them. So I just, parking is a, a huge concern as well as just the congestion and wondering, you know, on top of that, they say that the, um, three-story buildings aren't going to be an eyesore for residents, but right now, if you look at the setup, the residents will be looking straight at the three-story buildings. Because right now they have to look at pretty much, um, the one-story buildings that are right across the street and then, uh, maybe a couple two-story buildings that are a little farther off in the distance. But both of those buildings are going to be pretty much right at the front of the complex. So the neighbors are going to see that as an eyesore immediately. So I, I'm kind of confused as to how that's not being considered an eyesore for them. I would be very upset with, you know, some of my Skyview being taken away. Um, so those are some of my concerns. Um, again, parking is a huge one and I, I just, the whole study in July just doesn't really make sense to me. But, um, I think that the people who spoke before me did a lot of great, uh, information and research as well and I, I got a second most and all of that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Nicole. Uh, anyone else that you're aware of, Bates?
None that I'm aware of, sir.
So anyone else who would like to, uh, testify in opposition to this proposal? And I'll open the floor for any other interested, either for or against, or just want to state an opinion about the applicant's proposal. Hearing none, I'll go ahead and now turn this back over.
Hey Frank, sorry. Do I get a chance to get any of those questions answered or is that?
Yes, you do. That's, that's a nice segue for me, Mr. Bauer. This is, uh, now we turn it back over to, uh, Mr. Angelo and his team to, uh, rebut some of the questions, answer the questions and clarify their plan for those things that were brought up.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And we do appreciate the comments, uh, from the four people, uh, that testified. And I'll, I'll hit on a number of these. I think I'd like to have Matt maybe join in on some of these as well on the, on the parking. Um, Scott raised the issue of,
First, first I want to again emphasize that this is not a development proposal. There is no, this is not going through architectural review. There's a whole other follow-on process that when a building, when the building would be designed, uh, would, would be, uh, there would be a hearing at the, there'd be, go through the architectural review process at the city. So this act, the, the plan amendment itself has not approved any building on, on the property itself. Scott raised the question about recycling and waste management. That's a topic that, uh, um, would be dealt with during architectural review with the addition of a did, a hundred and sixteen new units. If, if that was what was proposed, and again, that's the maximum that would, could be allowed. It could be less. Um, uh, the issue of recycling and waste management would need to be, uh, addressed because that's one of the city's review standards. Timeframe, Scott? There is no timeframe right now. We talked about this with, with the, with the owner. Um, this is, this is the first step and then after this, uh, they, uh, there's a lot of work that would need to be done in terms of architectural drawings, engineering, things of that nature. So I can't give you a time, a specific timeframe, Scott. I'm sorry about that. But again, when it's in the architectural review phase, um, there would be notice provided to property owners and you'd have an opportunity to view the plans, the architectural drawings, the engineering drawings, things of that nature. Um, the parking permit program, Mr. Keel raised, I think, I would, maybe ask the city staff might want to respond to that because I believe that is a city program that, um, would be, uh, run through the city. And I don't know if it's initiated by the city or if it's initiated by the property owners, but I think I would defer that one to, um, to the city staff. Mr. Keel also raised a question about an entrance on Ninety-Fifth, making that Walton Valley Fire and Rescue, um, emergency access, uh, a more full access. I believe that was initially looked at as a possibility, but it's so close to the railroad tracks that I think there are some traffic safety issues that would, uh, that have, that would rate, uh, rise, rise up. Um, but again, that could be a part of the architectural review process itself. Um, let's see. I'm gonna ask Matt to talk about the parking study in July. The one thing I would note is, uh, the existing two hundred and twenty units, there are four hundred and fifty-seven parking spaces on the site right now, uh, for the two hundred and twenty units. The city's standard parking requirements for two hundred and twenty units would only require three hundred and fifty spaces. So they're basically over the required parking that the city requires, about a hundred parking spaces. Obviously, if additional housing units were put on there, there would be additional parking spaces provided as a part of that, uh, project as well. So, um, the, the conceptual site plan shows three hundred and thirty-six units per the, uh, the city's parking standard that would require four hundred and seventy-five spaces, but the concept plan is looking at five hundred and forty, five hundred and fifty spaces. So both existing and the proposed are in, uh, parking spaces are in excess of what the city's requirement, uh, would be. So would Matt maybe, uh, do you want to jump in on some of the, the trap, the parking, uh, comments?
Sure, yeah. Uh, good question about the, the July parking study counts. Um, that's more of a reflection of just when we were asked to do the study, um, than it was a specific, uh, effort to try and do this study in July. Um, your, your point is valid. Uh, you know, parking and traffic patterns are a bit different, uh, during the summertime than they are during the, the school months. But, um, r- reason why I think it's still valid in this case is really what we're trying to do is to study the time periods in which parking demand is typically highest. And if you look over the course of a twenty-four hour day, um, the highest parking demands for an, for a complex like Toowalton Heights and in an on-street setting is most often really early in the morning. So we studied the five A M., the six A M. time period and the, uh, occupancy levels that we were noting earlier are a reflection of what's going on during that time. And, and at five A M., it doesn't matter whether you're in the school year or not, uh, the parking shouldn't be, um, shouldn't be impacted by that. And just as a reflection on that, we also looked at the, you know, the late evening time period as well, the seven to eight P M. and the eleven P M. to twelve A M., also hours in which, uh, the parking demand shouldn't be influenced by the presence of a school year or not. Um, and then lastly, I think, uh, just to probably put a little bow on it, I, I think our parking study probably is fairly conservative. Um, you know, it was done in, uh, July of twenty twenty-one. Um, you know, the pandemic that we're still dealing with today, I think it was even a little bit more, uh, robust at that point. There were still a lot of work from home scenarios going on. So quite frankly, we probably have, um, a little bit more of a parking, uh, demand reflected in, a higher parking demand reflected in this time, in this study based on those conditions. So, um, yeah, I think that should answer that question.
Um, I, I believe that, I don't know, John, did you have anything you wanted to add regarding architectural or the the architectural review process or maybe next steps on that? If not, that's fine.
All, all I would add is, is just to reemphasize what you said. We, the owner, uh, took a look at this. We, when we realized that the housing study from the city of Toowalton identified the deficits in the, in the requirements for the different zoning types, we, they, they were interested in, uh, looking at this building. I mean, looking at, uh, capitalizing on their site and building that density. When we took, and, and finding out if it was possible. And that's where we ended up in this zoning requirement. So we haven't started designing a building. I think, uh, the other thing that the owner told us is if this, even if the zoning is approved, it's still the economics that make it work. And the only, the only, the only thing I would say is I, I, I would hope that, um, as architects, that just because a building is three stories tall doesn't mean that it's automatically an eyesore. And hopefully, um, if we get that far, we can do something to, um, make the buildings something that, that people would feel good about. And as you mentioned, Frank, I think if the, the owner did mention, if, if this moves ahead and if they decide to add additional units, the intent is also to bring the rest of that property up with that. It doesn't, it doesn't behoove them to build a new building and, and have everything else look old. So.
So I think, um, you know, in, in summary, we appreciate the comments and they're very similar to what we heard at our neighborhood meeting. And I think, you know, that, that's why the applicant did the study that Mayor Matt is talking about. And then we heard the comments at the planning commission and, and followed up with a, a canvassing of other apartment complexes, six apartment complexes within the area to see what their parking practices were. So, um, again, the planning commission and staff have both found that we comply with the, the criteria. Um, and I think if the council has any questions, we are here to, uh, available obviously to answer them. So I appreciate again your time and I appreciate the testimony this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Angelo, so I'm just gonna segue on that, uh, residential zone parking question that you referred to Steve and Keith. So if you could just, uh, at a high level describe what our residential, uh, neighborhood parking zone program works like? Cause we've got at least two or three of them right now.
Very happy to do that, Mayor. Thank you, um, for the opportunity. And so I think the council is pretty aware of it because most of the council have been through, I think, the last one, which was a couple of years ago now. Um, but just for the benefit of those listening in and out there, um, the residential parking zone is initiated by citizens. And so, um, if you want to reach out, anyone out there wants to reach out to Keith or myself, we can, um, get you pointed in the right direction. But ultimately, um, it's through our city's municipal code and so, um, it would essentially be in conjunction with our city's engineering and public works department, um, some kind of examination, kind of fleshing out what the potential boundaries in terms of what streets and locations would be part of the permit per, program. And then specifically, those locations would be set out and described in the Toowalton Municipal Code. And then, uh, the city, uh, takes the responsibility for, uh, providing permitting materials and then signage along those residential streets. And so that's kind of a broad overview. And again, um, we'd be more than happy to discuss this further with you offline and get you pointed in the right direction. If that's something that's of interest to you or other residents of the area.
Cause we have, there's a couple around Toowalton High School and there's one, uh, down here or at the end of Hazelbrook, uh, around the apartment complex there, uh, that I've been involved with on approval. And it was, uh, a fairly easy process to go through. The city is very supportive of residents when they go through it. And you work with the police department, but, uh, it's not onerous. It's not a time suck. It's just something that you express interest in. The city staff, uh, will work with the residents on that. Uh, so with that, I'll open the floor to questions from city councillors for either city staff or the applicant. Council Brooks. And then Council Pratt after that.
Um, thanks everyone for the conversation. I've learned a lot tonight. Um, and I, I guess, just starting with the parking, um, question, um, and maybe this is for Steve. Um, when, I know that some neighborhoods, there's days that you can't park on the street when there's service deliveries, like no parking on whatever the garbage pickup day is or, um, I don't know. So I guess I'm just curious how, So I guess, I'm just curious how the street cleaners get through there? Do they just avoid cleaning the streets or what's happening now, Steve?
That's a good question. In Walton, my understanding, and I live in the custody units, it's similar is that the street sweeping schedule is communicated to residents and then it's incumbent on you to move your car. And so last time it happened, I forgot to move my car and I saw the street sweeper went around my car. Actually, just got back from New York City where I helped my friend move his car to the other side of the street because they have exactly what you're talking about there. But yeah, the permit parking program, like the mayor described, it's a couple of different locations around the city. The last one, I think, was, was that Clicatet Street or the one at the K over by the high school? And then there's, that one, I think, is this, and then there's a couple of schools on ones as well, Mayor. And so that's, that's, that's the only ones that are in the TMC as far as, that are actually regulated and made possible by the city. And I would just echo the mayor's comments that it's a very friendly process. It's essentially the residents kind of identify the issue and then city staff really just takes it from there and makes it happen. Does that answer your question? So no on the street sweeping, yes, or just kind of either school zone, like school day purposes or just a general parking zone?
And for the general parking permit, how much does it cost to get a permit? And do you have to be a resident on the street or how does it work?
You would be a resident of the zone in which the parking permit is issued. And then there's no cost to it associated with it. It's just, it's essentially, I mean, I think it's really a similar process to this and like the mayor says, and I was not familiar with this one as much. But over on Hazelbrook, there is a similar situation there. And that's, to some extent, what it's intended for is to ensure that, similar in a school situation where there's significant amounts of people from outside of a particular neighborhood, you know, disproportionately using the public parking, that that's the purpose of the program.
So are we saying that the people that live in the apartment complex is outside the neighborhood then?
In the, I mean, in the sense that I think that Sagard is no parking on the north side. And then the south side, I mean, I think we'd have to, we'd have to work through that determination. But I mean, I mean technically, they don't live on the south side of the street. They live on the north side. And so the people that live on the south side are on the south side. So I mean, that's, that's kind of how the program works, I guess. I mean, we have to flesh out those details.
No, but I just want a clarification on what we're talking about so that not only the home residents, but the apartment residents understand what permit parking would look like. And I want to understand what it looks like too. And it's concerning to me, a couple of things here with the, with the garbage pickup, both for the apartments and for the homes. So both of those things really, really stick out to me. And I understand, you know, we just don't want overflow of garbage in any way, shape or form living near a river. We know that you can get rodents and all kinds of stuff. So that just comes up to me right now. And the other question I had for you, Steve, was the concern about traffic. I mean, this is always going to be the concern in our community. And already having a failed intersection there, how, when we say we would put on the list of projects, does that mean that we do it during 12 to moving forward? Is that far off into the future or does it happen concurrently with buildout if that were to happen?
That's a great question. So I'll delve a little bit more into the topic and then I might, Matt may remember, the intersection failure is not for some time. It's a long-term planning horizon over the next 20 years. Do you remember what the year was, Matt?
We didn't do a year-by-year iteration, but I think, safe to say it's probably 10 to 15 years, if not more.
And so as Matt mentioned in his presentation, the intersection fails irrespective of this zone change and irrespective of the addition of any new units within that 20-year timeframe. The delta between the failure that would happen without the units and then with the addition of the units is, it was, so the failure is determined over in excess of one volume to capacity. And so the difference was 0.1. And so it's a point, nine tenths of a percent difference in the two conditions. So it's pretty negligible. And so it's not really, there's not really very much contribution. It's a mathematical contribution, but in practice, it's not. And then the actual intersection, which is Sagard and Moon's Berry, the failure is north, is the northeast right turn. And so it's not a turning movement that would be associated with this complex, which is west and north of that intersection. And so because of the fact that it's an existing failure, it'd have to be put on the CAP, the CAP list. And then similar to other things that the city pays for through the capital improvement plan, you know, both in terms of roadways and then actual physical, like vehicles and things of that nature, the city would have to come up with a funding plan to figure out how to pay for those. And so it could be, you know, bond funding or given the fact that it's much longer in the time horizon, it's probably more likely to be some kind of SDC-funded improvement from future development. And so, for example, the system development charges that generated from additional units in the future could be used to pay for that kind of intersection.
Thank you. And then I just want to also speak to, especially because it's a tough conversation for a lot of people. We are identified and I do work on the public advisory board for Washington County. And so I look a lot about housing in the county level. And these county numbers that we get as a city to try to meet and from metro as well, part of us not meeting those numbers. And I think it's a really important part of this conversation is that our city is identified as severely rent burdened in a lot of places. And so people are spending over 50% of their income on rent. And so these $25 charge here or tickets, this community is disproportionately impacted by those kinds of charges compared to the renting community that's severely rent burdened compared to other residents in our city. So when making these considerations, and part of the way out is these density issues. And I do want to say, understanding that we do have some limitations as a city due to state and other jurisdictional, you know, policies that now are in effect. So it's, there's a lot to balance when making these considerations. And at the same time, I'm very concerned about the services in front of people's homes. And I'm curious also, why is there parking in front of homes but not parking in front of, on the other side of the street? Steve, why is parking allowed in front of homes but parking's not allowed in front of the permits?
I can't say the history of it for sure, but in general, Sagard is a, I think it's a minor or major arterial in the city's transportation system plan. And so, I mean, in a perfect world, there'd be parking on neither side of those streets. But given that there's individual residential homes with individual driveways, it's not really feasible, I think, to disallow parking on the south side. But that's, I mean, that's kind of the answer is just from a planning perspective, optimally arterials wouldn't have a whole bunch of driveways and parking at all that it would be prohibited on both sides. But obviously, this, the neighborhood is a little bit unique. And you see, of course, that pinch point where it is, it's the closest, most available parking. And so that, you know, the parking problems, if you've driven by there and observed that it's, the parking is tightest on that south side of Sagard because of that.
Well, I'm just curious because there's obviously a need and they can't get their garbage on their street clean in front of their homes if there's ever been consideration of having parking allowed on the other side of the street instead. Because in, and I'm going to let other people talk, but I have one more question for the gentleman about the parking studies. Is the 20% that is available still, how many spaces is that? Was that?
Yeah, hi, this is Matt again. So they have 457 total spaces today. So that 80-ish percent that I was quoting earlier, it's roughly 360-ish of those 457.
Thank you.
Counselor Pratt.
I think my question is for you, Steve. When I look at the slide that shows the parking standards, Mr. Hewart, sorry. So there's 457 spaces and they're proposing 548, which is 91 spaces. But they're talking about adding 116 units. So my question is, won't they have to, I mean, if you have a studio even under a new TDC with HB 2001, you know, requirements, you have to add one space for even a studio. So that's a minimum. Don't they have to add a space for every new unit of construction? Or are they allowed to do this where they, they're using up parking spaces that are already existing? So it's new construction, so I'm confused as to why that's allowed.
That's, that's a great question. I mean, the answer is, is that the total apartment complex, I mean, if it were reviewed under architectural review, it'd have to come in compliance with current standards. And so whatever, I mean, I guess I'll just say the conceptual development plan that you saw is an exercise to determine whether or not the maximum number of units allowed under density could even fit in the first place. And so it's not intended to be a final plan of what actually works, you know, pencils from the developer's side and then works through all the other disciplines of architecture, engineering and planning. And so with that said, I mean, the, I think that it's on, I think that it's on one of the slides and it's kind of small and hard to read, so I won't go back and belabor it. But I mean, it's, it's going to be, I think the units are like studio, one bedroom and two bedroom mix. And so I think it'll be something like, you know, an average of one and a half spaces total per unit. And so if it ends up being 336, then it's going to have to be, you know, four or something, almost, almost five. I mean, it's going, the short answer is that it's going to have to comply with the minimum parking based on the unit count that's in the currently adopted TDC if they come in for development. And so whatever is there, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, so they can, they can include what they're calling addition or what, a parking already exists in this complex as part of that total number needed for the new development.
That's correct, yeah. And so obviously, some of it would satisfy the existing units, some of it would satisfy others. And I think that, you know, certainly they've provided excess in the past. And I think that they've heard some testimony from folks that live in the complex right now that parking's tight. And so it's something for them to consider in pursuit of the new units. And it's not atypical for apartment complexes and other uses, you know, particularly larger parking demand, like a large commercial, to provide excess parking over the minimum to account for it. But again, you know, we're looking at kind of what is the minimum that they would have to do and what could we require versus what would actually, actually be constructed. Does that answer your question, Counselor Pratt?
Yes, thank you.
And if I may, just to go back to Counselor Brooks's question just about the parking on the other side of the street, they just looked and quickly kind of did some measurements of the site of Sagard. The answer is, is that there's not enough room in the existing curb-to-curb to provide parking on both sides. There's parking on the south side of Sagard. There's a buffer striped bike lane. And then there's two travel lanes and then there's a bike lane on the north side. And so there's just, there's not enough room. There'd have to be some kind of, there'd have to be some kind of street improvement projects. And I don't know if there's even enough room to do that, but that would be what would have to happen to accommodate another parking on the north side.
Counselor Sacko.
Thank you. So my question has to do with the deficit that we currently have with the medium to high zone. And so with the, with the new apartments that are going in by Stafford Hills, what zone is that? And then does that alleviate our deficit then? Because my concern is that if we're using that as an argument for the rezoning, is that going to still be a deficit once those apartments go in?
So that's a great question, Counselor Sacko. Thank you. So the short answer is, is that, and this is a little bit academic and so I'll try to answer it as best as I can. The zoning of the, start with the easy question first. The zoning of the apartments on Nyberg is high-density residential RH zoning. Because the property, that property was already zoned and was actually, at least in, I think in the process of being, the application was, I think, submitted around the same time as we did the housing needs analysis. That, that housing, because we knew, you know, we know what the density is, we know what the acreage is. And so we had a rough idea of how many units that site is capable of. And so that site actually was calculated and included in, as an available amount of housing units to be constructed, even though it hadn't been done, it still counted as, as, you know, as a potential site to fulfill the need that would have been projected in that housing type. And that's actually why you can see in the table that we included in the presentation that I think that there's actually maybe a surplus in RH and that there's a deficit in higher than RH density. And then there's a deficit in the medium because there's not actually, if you look around at the city, there's not a lot of that zoning around. And that's, that's basically how the determinations were made. And so again, I mean, I will say that, you know, the housing needs analysis is a goal and it's a target that the council set, that the council strive, is, you know, striving to meet. And I think that it's clear that, you know, we've identified a couple of the con-plan criteria and provided findings that the proposal meets the criteria. That said, it's in the council's purview to certainly look at the surrounding conditions and the appropriateness of the upzone in this particular location to meet those criteria. I'll say, it's worth stating that there aren't really any, very many other sites that are zoned RH that have additional development capacity. And so this is a very, I think Counselor Brooks put it well, there's a lot of competing things going on here. And so it's not, not an easy decision. And so we just want to do our best to kind of highlight the applicable standards and, you know, where we think they're met and where we think there's, you know, certainly things that are, you know, were concerning to the planning commission, like parking in the, in the permit parking program. And, you know, leave it to you as the council to set the direction.
Thank you. I have one more question. Like everybody, parking is going to be a concern. And with the numbers that were rattled off, if I, if I did this correctly and captured all the right numbers, currently, the apartment complex has approximately two parking spaces per unit. And that would go down based on the numbers provided tonight to about 1.6. So we will be, regardless if there's more parking added, that area will still, will be at a, in a worse position than they are today. So my question is, and I know this is not an architectural review conversation, but if we do approve this rezone, and as somebody who hasn't gone through this before, my question is, and I, and I know our, the say that we have is limited in this based on other policies set in place. But what sort of influence do we have at that architectural review point if we do go ahead and do the rezone? I guess my concern is that I don't want to, you know, lose all control if we push this forward. What sort of influence do we have then moving forward?
That's a, that's a great question. Well, I think that depending on the final configuration, it's probably likely that, that a future architectural review application, whether go to the architectural review board or via staff-level decision. And so it would only come And so it would only come directly to the council on an appeal in the future. And so, I mean, as far as direct influence on the application, you know, you certainly have the opportunity to comment on it and provide feedback for it. I mean, I will say and be direct on this is that, you know, we have with the, as Counsel Pratt mentioned, the passage of the HB 2001 standards and then recent requirements for clear and objective requirements. You know, once, once and if this rezone is approved, the standards that would be applied to the complex would be whatever is in the development code at that time. And there's, I mean, they would, it would be the parking minimum and it would be the applicant's choice if they wanted to provide additional parking or exceed it. And I think that that's an accurate observation, that applicant is providing potentially more of an overage than at least from a conceptual viewpoint than they would be providing. And so, you know, I think this is, this is probably the inflection point relative to what you're saying as far as once a decision is made on this application, there's much limited purview for the council unless it comes back to the monopole.
Other questions? No further questions, Counsel Hillier.
Thank you, I don't have any questions necessarily because my fellow counselors have asked what I was curious about and beyond. So thank you to everyone for their thoughtful questions. And I guess I am really concerned about the parking. I'm concerned about the quality of, of a living experience and green space and those sorts of things for all of our residents, whether they're in Twelton Heights or they're in a single-family home across the street. And, and I guess my comment is, just because other people do things doesn't always, you know, make it the right thing to do when we're comparing one living area to another living area. And so I would just encourage the applicant to really take to heart. Because when I looked at the standards for whether we can, you know, approve or not approve, I don't know how we could not approve it. But I, I really appreciate that you're here and that you've gone over and above to consider what the residents have said. And I hope you will continue to do that because really Twelton is a quality place to live and we want to keep it that way. So that's my comment.
Other questions? This is Q and A, we'll have deliberations after the Q and A and the hearing is closed. This is a Q and A period. Counsel Reyes.
Sorry.
That's okay. We're all learning, a lot of us haven't been through a lot of these yet.
Yeah, I missed the Q and A, go ahead and wait for that time, thank you.
Other questions? Counsel Brooks and then Counsel Pratt.
I'm sorry, this is kind of an off question, but just because we're here and because the residents are here. But I'm just, I'm, I was, the garbage thing's still in my mind and I'm just curious what city ordinances around garbage overflowing on garbage day, is there ways that the city has oversight at all?
So is that question for Steve?
Steve?
Let me, let me.
Well, I, I was gonna see, Bill Chief, do you have any insight into that?
You know, as I'm pondering that question, you know, one of the topics that was discussed, and just for those on the call, my name is Bill Steele, the chief of police. We don't have any restrictions currently under state law or municipal code that addresses the blocking of somebody putting their trash can in front of their house or their private mailbox. Driveways are off limits, you can't block that, but not for a private mailbox or where they would normally place their garbage can. If you're talking about overflow on the apartment complex or property not having enough, basically enough service to accommodate that, I'm gonna have to dive into that, that one's just not coming to the, the top of my head unfortunately.
Thank you very much, I'm curious, thanks.
Mayor, Mayor and Counsel, I can maybe jump in real quick. Again, Chad Jacobs, the interim city attorney. The city does have certain provisions in its code unrelated to land use that relate to scattering of rubbish. And if you scatter rubbish on public or private property, that can violate your code. And so that would just be a separate code enforcement action that the city would take beyond the scope of a land use proceeding, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Yeah, I know it's beyond that, but I just feel like especially since we have residents here, it's important, it's very concerning to all of us, thank you.
Counsel Pratt, have you got a question?
Yeah, I apologize for this because I was sick on Friday and missed my call with Carolyn. And my question is, if this, we're seeing that this meets the plan amendment criteria, so is that our only choice here? Is if we find that they need that plan amendment, we have to approve? Is that what I'm understanding?
So maybe I can jump in again from a legal point of view. Yeah, so your obligation tonight is to judge the application against the criteria. So if you believe that the application is not the criteria, then you basically have to approve. I would note that there is, one other criteria that you're looking at tonight is, is it in the public's best interest to approve the application? So there is, as I think Steve was mentioning before, there, there's a balancing here of all these different things. You've got your housing needs analysis, you've got the parking, you've got everything else to sort of say what is in the public's interest. So that's where if you are not going to approve it, you're going to need to articulate why it's not in the public's best interest. I think staff has outlined and the planning commission has outlined where they believe it is in the public's interest to approve it. So it would be up to the council to articulate reasons contrary to that to sort of override that. And then staff would write those findings and bring it back to you for approval.
Okay, thanks Chad. Other questions?
So I just have a procedural question, it might be for Steve or Chad. So as I understand it, since this is just a zoning, this is a zoning change, we can't attach conditions such as, you know, no more, you know, asking the management not to charge a $25 parking fee and things like that. But when we go in for redevelopment, isn't there a possibility of a, conditions being imposed? And would that be subject, so when they go in for the architectural review, is that considered redevelopment at that point? And staff might be able to impose conditions at that point?
So I'll also let Mr. Jacobs elaborate, but I think the answer is, is that you certainly have the purview to add conditions of approval to the zone change. It's a little bit less difficult than a development application, but it's certainly within your purview to do so, I would argue. With respect to the housing, I think that one of the hard things about imposing conditions of approval that aren't in the, in the approval criteria is the, the clear and objective requirement for housing is, is gonna make that a little bit harder. And so I think that that would be, you know, part of your deliberations as a counsel this evening. Did you have anything to add, Chad?
Yeah, certainly. I think when you're thinking about conditions of approval, you have to link them to the criteria that you're applying. And so tonight, it'd be a little difficult to impose a criteria sort of saying, you know, you can't charge for an extra spot because it's not necessarily linked to the criteria that's before you. If you look at the, the architectural application and that design review as, as it's moving forward for the actual project, there may be situations and facts in that record that could demonstrate a need for additional parking or additional parking spots for, you know, the number of bedrooms, not charging for that, you know. But that would, you'd want to link that to whatever criteria that we're applying at that point in time. So for example, if at that point in time, the data from the transportation study shows that all the parking on the street is causing problems with traffic and it's, and, and the reason that we have the parking requirements in the first place to have those spots available is to keep that, those cars off the street to improve traffic flow, and that's not being met, then that could be a basis to impose the additional criteria. But we would need to establish the record at that point in time to impose such criteria. I'm not, you know, from what I've seen tonight, I don't think there's, there's enough evidence in the record to try to go down that road with a zoning application. But that doesn't preclude it from happening later down the road, either at the staff or an appeal to the planning, or appeal to the planning commission or the city council.
Thanks Chad. So just to re, so Steve, so when they go in, so the say tonight, it's approved tonight and we go, the applicant goes into development and applies, goes through that process, application process, the, there will be no hearing, it's a staff level decision at that point, correct?
It would depend on the nature of the specific proposal is the answer, because it's a unit and then it's an adjacency. It's a little bit tricky in the code, but I think that if they propose more than 100 units, then they're assured to be at the architectural review board level. I think that, I'll just say that if, if there's not clear and objective criteria to support adding those additional conditions of approval, if there's not a direct nexus between the two things, between charging for parking and not, I think that it will still be equally potentially tricky to attach things that are not already codified at a future development application as well, regardless of whether it went to a staff level type two or a type three with architectural review board. And so I, I mean, in, in some ways, I guess maybe I would, we might need to huddle on this, but consider if the criteria in the public interest, if there's concern on the council that those are not being met, that conditions of approval that would be needed to make the approval within the public interest might be, might be worth pursuing, I don't know.
Okay, right. Any other questions for staff or the applicant? All right, so at this point, I'll go ahead and close the hearing. And now our council deliberations, so the floor is open for deliberation. Now you can state your, your feelings and your viewpoint and I will lead off with Counsel Reyes.
Thank you. I'm pretty sure, and I know which departments you're talking about, I have, I have a lot of friends there, a lot of people from my community that live in that apartment complex. And they have children, they, I mean, I'm sure they have vehicles and all that, but for parking. And a lot of people ask me, why is this Spanish-speaking community coming and speaking? You gotta understand that we come from very crowded apartments. Or I grew up in an apartment, one bedroom, seven people. So, you know, for me, like having extra space is like a big deal and it's great. So having a roof over my head is more important than having parking. And that's how a lot of people in my community think. And I hate to say that, but those of you who are talking about parking, they do, they are concerned about that, I'm sure they are. They don't want to pay $50 extra a month, but they're satisfied with that one parking space that they get. Because in other places like LA, you get zero. And so I, I hate to say this, but I do want more housing in a roof over somebody's head and then let them decide how extra parking, I'm sure they'll get one parking spot or two, whatever that is. Let the, the families decide what that extra, how they park or how many cars are gonna be inside their garage or parking spot. Because to me, what matters is that someone is inside a home, warm with food, and then the rest will be fine. And I guarantee you, that's how my community thinks, that's how my mom and I, new immigrants think. Maybe the third, fourth generation would think differently when they build some wells or something. But in that apartment complex, I have to think, I can't think like I think in my home because I think differently because I've been here from second generation. But I just want my people to have a roof over their head, get the, what they deserve as what they're paying, and then they'll figure things out as life comes and, and things move forward. So that's how I think, and if you ask my community, they'll probably think the same way. So I know that we can figure out how the parking thing's gonna be, but I'm, I, I'm thinking of roof over somebody's head and being warm and, and sheltered then. And then the vehicles and all that, things that, you know, come will happen later. And, and like my mom would say, we'll take care of that later. Right now, we just need a home. So I, that's, that's the only reason I'm for this. And I, and because I do want people to have a home. And, and I think that we might figure things out, like parking permit outside, you know, like we did with the, the high schools and close to the high school where we assigned parking and figured that out later. But I, I don't know, that's, that's my thinking process. Because I'm not thinking like me right now, like in my home, I'm thinking like, what would I do? Why do I care if I lived in those apartments? And that's, that's my thinking process and I wanted to say that as we make this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments, Counsel Brooks and Counsel Sacko.
Thank you, and thanks to everybody that's shared tonight, there's a lot to think about. I mean, the housing needs analysis, it is a goal that we have agreed on and prioritized as a council. We do have a missing middle and the people here that live in the apartments. We want more people to be able to have access to affordable housing, so that's really important. At the same time, there's a lot of rules that apply really well to places that have great public transportation around parking that are applied to our city as well. And we don't have the same access as somebody in LA or somebody in Portland or even Beaverton. So I would hope that, especially after all the communications tonight from the people who are currently living in the property, that the property owners really take into consideration that there are families, when thinking and mentally planning around parking, not going to minimums that are legislated with other communities in mind. We have, I wish I could say, let's get all the cars off the road because we have a traffic problem. We have a car bin problem. And, but we also really need housing for families. And that means that there's gonna be more than one car and a lot of times, a very difficult time with affordability. And I still have those same concerns about permits being disproportionate, amount of income, tickets being a disproportionate amount of income to individuals that will be finding themselves possibly severely rent burdened living in their place. So we need to get people off the streets. I completely agree with Counselor Reyes on that. And we need to have places for people to live. It looks to me that we've met the criteria. And I'm also very interested, you know, at the same time, the concerns about people losing their storage, losing their green spaces, losing their parking spaces. And we want to still maintain a decent quality of life for everybody and not leave people behind just because they're renting. And so, you know, that, that's my biggest urge from, for consideration from the petitioners. Thank you.
Counsel Sacko.
Thank you. But I have to say, this is one of the hardest decisions that, that has been before me in my time on council. And it's not something that, you know, I'm taking lightly at all. And, you know, going back to that statement, you know, what's best for a public interest. And I really appreciate Maria's comments, those were very moving, about having roofs over our heads. And, you know, we maybe think about this problem from the situation where we're personally sitting in, but we have to, you know, sometimes remove ourselves from our situation and look at the broader scope of the needs of the people in our community. We have a huge housing crisis in our area. And that's, that's a huge issue for us. And we, and we hear about affordable housing and all the conversations we have, even in, you know, the parks conversation we had earlier today, housing was brought up. And so it creeps into all areas of our life. and so it creeps into all areas of our life, because we are in such a, such a dire state. But then, of course, I always, I, I also think about the people in the Twelton Heights community now and their quality of life, and, you know, it's very important to me too, and you know, I look forward to hearing the other counselors and Mayor, your, your, your statements as well, and I think that you know, together we'll make the right choice and do what's best for the public interest, and that's what we, you know, that's what we're tasked with tonight, so those are my thoughts and opinions, and thank you, everybody, and, and your thoughts as well.
Thank you. Counselor Pratt.
Counselor Grimes has her hand up herself, I'll defer to her.
Well, she's counsel president, so she always goes, she always gets like second to last. Do you wanna go Nancy now, or would you rather have Valerie go first?
I'm happy to defer to Counselor Pratt, I'm looking forward to hear her thoughts and comments.
Yeah, I have to agree with Counselor Sacco, and this is really difficult, and what Counselor Reyes said, I mean, it's like we're on this Maslow's hierarchy thing, and it's really sad to me that, well, number one, I question, I, I know these units will be more affordable than housing, but I, I'm really concerned that they'll be affordable for most people, and it super sets me that these will be loca, I mean, we have the parking issue, we're gonna hurt the neighborhood around this. I, I mean, I can't believe those houses around that neighborhood were not put in in the last couple of years, they've been there a long time, so I'm sure they have plenty of driveway space for parking, so I find it hard to believe this parking isn't from the apartments. But we're also, that's also a location where, you know, we talk about livability and equity, and those are located in places where we don't have trails, the only park within walking distance is Lafferty Park, which, you know, is a tiny, neat little pocket park, and and it, it's just like a conundrum, because we need to have housing for people, we know that, but it's just terrible that we have to, it has to be in what I see in equitable way.
Counselor President Grimes.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everyone this evening, I'd like to thank the applicant, I'd like to thank the city staff with their thoughtful replies to our questions, and I would especially like to thank the residents of the apartment complex that joined us tonight and gave testimony, as well as the homeowners that joined us this evening and gave testimony. For people that joined us at five o'clock tonight, all the way through, it's been a long evening, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate the residents and the members of our community that take the time and make the effort to make flyers and reach out to their neighbors and, you know, join these long meetings over Zoom to share their life experiences with us. I, I put a great deal of weight behind what I hear our residents say, and I appreciate them sharing with us very much. I was very moved by what Counselor Reyes said. I take that very seriously, and I take that to heart, and I, I want you to know that, Maria, I find your background and your perspective is very important to me, and it carries a lot of weight with me. But I must admit, sitting, listening to this very difficult conversation tonight, you know, coming back to the question of being in the public's best interest, I kind of feel like it hasn't really reached the point where I really feel that it is in the public's best interest, and I have some specific reasons why. The first being that I feel like we have current issues with this development and the, and the adjoining neighborhood that have been known and have been discussed, but have never been addressed. And I feel like, you know, we have a problem with parking, we have a problem with access to parking, and appropriate parking, not only for the residents of the development, but also the homeowners across the street, and the fact that, you know, the homeowners aren't able to access or park, or have egress to their own front of their homes, parking inside, I, I find that to be a real problem. The second thing that makes me feel that this isn't necessarily in the best interest of the public is the applicant coming to us asking for a change of zone, but not submitting any type of plan for us to consider. I find that that leaves me a little flat footed, it, it's a little bit like a blank check, sort of taking on faith that if we make the decision to change, you know, to medium-high density, that all of our concerns will be met somewhere down the line with future proposals that we haven't seen and we can't consider, and we can't consider if it mitigates the concerns of the council, the concerns of the residents, the concerns of the neighborhood. So I find that to be troubling, especially because a lot of the argument tonight seems to be revolving around our need for housing, which is a stated need, and also what's behind our need for housing, and what's behind a lot of what motivated the council to have additional housing as a priority, is our need for affordable housing. And since we don't have a plan to consider for the development, and we've had zero conversation around the whole issue of affordability, I have no way of knowing if this development has affordable housing, and if it caters to the missing middle that we're discussing. I don't know, I can't make a judgment based on that, and from what we've heard about additional fees for parking and how it sort of incrementally increases, we're taking a, an unknown housing price and then adding fifty, seventy-five dollars perhaps per month to that, to help mitigate, you know, a, a parking crunch that we have. And the other thing that makes me concerned about this being in the public's best interest, and some of the other counselors have touched on this, is, you know, certain constraints that we have in the area, we are, we have only, we have parking available sagr, but it's only one side of the street, and it has to take the place of resident parking, so I find that to be a tension point that makes me uncomfortable. We're talking about a development increasing potentially by fifty percent, going from ten to fifteen units, or units per, and then we've got a school right there where we have great deal of traffic in the mornings and the afternoons in that area for people having to access the school, which isn't something that's common to all different areas when we're looking to change zoning. You know, that's something that's very specific to that location that concerns me, as well as the railroad tracks that add additional encumbrances and complications to trying to work out alternate traffic areas, and that makes me very uncomfortable, as well as the lack of a really robust public transit around there. Because that's another part of this whole idea of increasing housing, increasing affordable housing, is that there needs to be some sort of a component that makes it a thoughtful and affordable area to be, and part of that is, you know, public transit, and I feel like we've got, you know, a dearth of that around that area, so you know, when I take all those things into consideration, and I just really don't feel like this area at this time, with a lack of a plan, being asked to go from the density it currently has to fifty percent greater density, without a plan to really set my mind at ease about all these questions we brought up tonight, I just really don't feel that it's in the public's best interest, and that's sort of my thinking on this this evening. So I'm looking forward to hearing from Mayor and seeing what his thoughts are.
Thanks, Nancy. I got a few notes here, so the one thing I, I mentioned before, the apartment complex here at the end of Haysbrook Road, as many of you know, I live right near Jergens Park, and with the increasing cost of rent, we started seeing in the neighborhood here that, you know, the two-bedroom, three-bedroom apartments blossom from one car to two cars to three cars, and eventually, the cars exceeded the amount of spots in this apartment complex's layout, and it started bleeding into the neighborhood, the neighborhood started getting irate, and we resolved it by putting those restricting parking to residents who live in the houses across from the apartment complex, and because they had the same problem that Mr. Keel is experiencing, that they couldn't, the garbage mailboxes, could never park their car, couldn't have anybody over any, you know, for weekend events, because there's no parking right in front of their house. So one of the things that I would encourage the applicant to look at is this parking fee, and to have a really robust parking management plan in the event that this is approved, and then a development application is approved. Because the, given different market conditions, if a tenant was to come visit Twelton Heights and then find out that parking's an issue, they probably wouldn't rent there. But with the lack of apartments, there's not a lot of choice, and a lot of folks who have certain budget limitations, maybe this is an air price zone, so they really have no choice, and as, as mentioned before, they'll live with it, grit, with, grit their teeth with the one spot, but it's not ideal. So in the event we approve this, we could fix the issue with the homeowners across the street by, you know, creating a, a parking, a permitted zone fairly easily, but that doesn't solve the issue for the residents at Twelton Heights. And as Counselor President Grimes just mentioned, we're a very car-centric suburban city. You know, lack of public transit being number one, as Counsel President Grimes says, lack of access, lack of, I mean, yeah, there's a bus line that goes down, you know, the other corner, there's a bus stop, but it's pretty limited access to limited routes, and if you really need, if your job's over in Oregon City, we all know that it's gonna take you hours to get there, that the transit here is more oriented to getting you to and from Portland, not to east-west, so that's a stroke of the folks. My conundrum here, as folks are saying, is HB two thousand and one. HB two thousand and one kind of handcuffed us tremendously, as Steve mentioned before, and my fear is, not my fear, the legal part of this is HB two thousand and one is to purpose was increase density and limit cities, as Steve mentioned, to remove arbitrary standards from permitting, so that cities couldn't block things they just didn't like. Not that this, that's what's happening here, but this is the first instance where we're gonna start seeing the impact of HB two thousand and one as, you know, as mayors and city's counselors, we weren't wild about this, we fought this in the legislature, but we, we lost the, the battle there, and HB two thousand and one passed to encouraging, encourage missing, encourage missing middle housing, which is terrific, and make housing more affordable, but with that comes higher density and more cars in the suburbs. So my perplexing, you know, situation, like you're saying, is the general, you know, the, the public good, and, you know, frustrating has been, you know, all the years I was city councilor and mayor, when we had these development projects, is we're pretty handcuffed, if you will, where, you know, if the develop, the applicant meets the standards, we might not like it, we really have distaste for it, we try to work with the applicant, get some conditions, but our ability to apply conditions to development has severely decreased in the last few years. So it, it gets frustrating, and I just want to let folks know in Twelton Heights that that's the conundrum we're in, and the residents, I think we can fix the homeowners, actually, the residents, we can fix the homeowners issue, but it's really tough for us to fix the residents at Twelton Heights, and given the ample parking spots and addressing all those issues, and that's what I look forward to when the applicant comes forward with a development application that at that time, they have a better plan for parking, a better plan, as, you know, addressing all the questions that were asked tonight, that staff ideally then wouldn't have to have the discussion about imposing additional conditions, that they would see, we would see a surplus of parking, and that folks wouldn't have to pay additional fees for that parking, and that, you know, they wouldn't have problems with garbage collection. So that's my opinion, this is one of the things that's frustrating to be a city councilor and mayor, that you do wanna do what the great good is, how you define that is kind of interesting, but with regulations coming down from the state of Oregon and from Metro, it limits our decision authority to pretty much be very strict in adherence with our city ordinance. So that was, that's my opinion. I'll be the first one to say, I know I would approve this, because based on the criteria, I think the applicant met the criteria, it just matter, I'm not wild about it, and I would ask the applicant to address some of our questions and fears and residents' questions as they go forward in the development process. So I'll turn it open to other folks. On council. Counselor Pratt.
I'm so tired of coming in. I'm, I'm still struggling with what Counselor Grimes just said about the public good, I guess, where I'm, I, I understand all you're saying, and I'm, oh, gosh.
That'd be a question for Chad. When it comes to, you know, the city is not allowed to do arbitrary standards, how, how is that interpreted when it comes to public good? So we're putting you on the spot, your first night, don't you?
I, I know, this is gonna be the first and last time you see me. A, a, as Steve has mentioned several times, it's, it's a great question, Mayor and Counselor Pratt. You have to have clear criteria, and, you know, that's sort of the gist of Hospital two thousand and one, and, you know, the, the, what's in the best interest of the public is often a difficult standard to say what is clear and not clear. And I think that's really where folks are struggling, and, and Steve, you know, certainly jump in if you've got other opinions on this, but from a purely legal perspective, if you are going to find that this is not in the best interest of the public, then I think you have to articulate very specific reasons why that that standard is not met, along the lines that President, Council, Council President Grimes was beginning to do, so that you've got a very clear standard as to how you are defining what is in the best interest of the public as a council. There is a process where LUBA, which is the, the body that this decision could be appealed to, provides a certain amount of deference to the city council's interpretation of its own code, but as part of that process, you need to be able to find what is in the best interest of the public, so that the criteria is very clear that we're, that we're using tonight. It's, it's not an easy standard, I mean, you know, we're, we're going through things, as the mayor said, for the first time under Hospital two thousand and one, lots of cities are struggling with this, and I can't promise you that how LUBA's going to rule on that, you know, if there is an appeal filed. You know, but, you know, the, the best process that you can do is continue the path down that Council President Grimes did to articulate the very specific reasons why. And, and that's the best sort of situation you can put yourself in, if you feel that this doesn't meet the best interest of the public. Steve, I don't know if you have anything to add.
And I think that's a great summary, I think I would just add that, again, this is quasi judicial decision-making, not legislative, like we, we did recently in Hospital two thousand and one, and so it's a sufficiency of evidence in the record, and so you certainly have some testimony in the record, in addition to sentiments from the counselors themselves, from residents of the complex and the, of the, of the area, and homeowners and so forth, that I think, you know, gives some weight to, to the public, to the, in the public interest question. I mean, I think obviously, we would need a concurrence of a majority of the council, you know, one way or the other, to make that finding. I think the other thing that I'll just offer and submit as a, you know, based on some of our previous experience with quasi judicial applications, is, you know, it doesn't seem like we have necessarily a unanimous council. is, you know, it doesn't seem like we have necessarily a unanimous council, at least sitting right now in support of the application as submitted. And so I think the other question is whether or not the council wants to, you know, consider, is there, is there an agreed-upon condition of approval that the applicant would proffer or the council and staff would propose? Because we're gonna, we would have to come back, even if a majority approves the application, so I'd have to come back at a subsequent meeting anyway to make a, to make a final reading on this. And so, I mean, I think that's the other thing they consider. And I guess the one that I'll offer as a discussion point would be a condition of approval relating to the provision of guest parking above and beyond the minimum parking required in the code. And so I'll turn it back to council for further discussion and deliberation, but I think that's certainly an option.
If I could, before we go back to council real quick, one other thing for the councils to consider is that you do have the ability to leave the record open. So if you want to provide either the applicant or, you know, we had some testimony tonight that there would have been others here who would have wanted to testify. You have the ability to leave the record open to allow additional submission of comments that could then sort of bolster your decision one way or the other, based on the record.
Chad, is that something we can do or is that something the applicant would have to request?
The applicant can request it, any person participating can request it, and the council can do it on its own accord.
Okay, thank you. So I saw, I think, Councilor Sacco's hand, was yours up and also Councilor Grimes?
I just have a quick question to what we were just discussing, it's maybe a stupid question. But when we're defining public, and sorry to get into the nitty-gritty, but are we, is the public the city of Twalton? Who, when we're talking about the best interest of the public, does it go beyond the city? Is it regional or is it smaller than that? I just want to be sure that when we think of the best interest of the public, we know who the public is.
Generally speaking, you're looking at your jurisdiction, which would be the city of Twalton. You know, depending on the facts of any given situation, you may look more broadly or more narrowly. But generally speaking, you're gonna look at the city.
Thank you.
Council President Grimes and Councilor Hillier.
Thank you. Steve, something that you said I have a question about. You mentioned the idea of perhaps entertaining conditions of approval. But because they didn't bring a plan for us to consider, it's simply a zoning change request. And then there were some, I mean, there was a drawing that was submitted in the presentation, but the applicant said that it was sort of just a general possible idea, that it's not something that they're married to and it's not something that they're submitting as exactly what they want a redevelopment to look like where we did approve the zone change. How can we, or can we, talk about, you know, asking for specific conditions when we don't really know what we're looking at in the first place?
That's a, that's a great question. I mean, the answer, I think, is, is that the council needs to trust that the minimums and standards in the development code would, you know, for example, if this was a bare piece of dirt, you know, would the standards in the development code yield a development in this zone that would be acceptable to the council? And so I think that even though it'd be redevelopment, I mean, the proposal would be addressed based on those standards. And so I guess that's what I'm saying is, is that I'm hearing among some of the councillors, you know, some concern about the public good. And so I think that's the question of whether or not there's an opportunity to condition it in a way that would meet in the middle between those councillors that are concerned about it. And if there's something in particular, and that's why I identified guest parking because it's something that seems to be a thread that I saw woven throughout some of the comments. And it's something that would be above and beyond the minimums. You wouldn't have to tinker with the minimums of the parking itself, and then it would be something, something separate. But again, I mean, I think that's maybe a further question in the council deliberations and maybe some kind of straw poll to figure out where people are at. And if that is such a thing that would, you know, would that, would that help people get to one answer or another or not? It may not. And I think just wanting to keep all the options on the table at this point.
Council Hillier.
Thank you. So I think my questions are for both Chad and Steve, please. So you mentioned, and continuing on the agreed-upon condition of approval potentially around the guest parking. Would that potentially set a precedent or for future developments by different applicants and give us the ability to either alter our code in Twalton or the development and redevelopment code for us to then make it more equitable for, for others?
I can start to answer that question and then Chad, if you have anything to add. So, I mean, it doesn't necessarily directly set a precedent. I mean, I think what we're seeing is, is that it would be a condition of approval that the council finds is necessary to meet that standard of in the public interest. And so it's an application-specific approval criteria. And so it's based on the facts in the record that are specific to this application. Obviously, if there is a similar factual situation, you know, the same council could find different, a different conclusion from, you know, the same or similar facts. I think there's also something to be said, just kind of adhering to concerns and thinking about the future, you know, future further development. I mean, that's also certainly an option would be to approve the application as written and then direct staff separately to explore, you know, amendments to the development code to impose this more broadly. I mean, there's only a large menu of options out there. I think that I'm just kind of posing a potential scenario where we've heard from some of the councillors, it feels like, you know, that there's support for and interest for providing additional housing opportunities in the community. And then we've also heard, you know, testimony and sentiments that there's concerns that, you know, that the proposal may not adequately protect against some aspects of impact to the public as the code reads. And so just trying to figure out if there's, you know, room to maneuver, as it were, between those two things. Or, I mean, again, the answer could be, you know, no, the council doesn't feel at this time. Because there's, of course, the timeliness of the proposals and other criteria. And so it could be that it's in the public interest, but it's not in the public interest at this time because the council doesn't feel that the development code would support an outcome specific to this application that it feels comfortable with. And so, I mean, there's a, there's a really, I mean, I don't, I'm trying to kind of keep it somewhat high level, but there's a really wide-ranging menu of possible options that we could get into. I just, I think, before we get into like either a yea or nay vote and go in one direction, just to kind of mention that there's, you know, some potential room to move around.
Council Pratt.
I know it would lengthen this process, but I'm somewhat in favor of a continuance, especially after hearing that the people that witnessed the complex were not adequately noticed. And that really concerns me, that we've not heard from everybody. And also, I think this is a very, very difficult decision and that might be oversold to have a little more time to process.
So I'm just gonna ask real quick, Chad, the difference between keeping their record open and a continuance? Just for folks, so they know the legal definitions.
So just keeping the record open basically allows for additional testimony to be heard. And then it allows for the applicant then to also submit an additional rebuttal based on the information that's received. And so you're talking a 14-day sort of continuation of just keeping the record open. Right now, I believe, and I may have missed it, but I believe, Mayor, you closed the record to allow for the deliberations. So we'd have to reopen the record and then, you know, have the continuation. If you wanted to actually just continue the hearing itself to a later date, you know, that would be a situation where you would actually just not do anything else until you have your next meeting and then sort of go through this process again. I, you know, my recommendation is that you just keep the record open, allow people to submit everything in writing, allow the applicant to do a rebuttal in writing, and then you would come back and deliberate at your next meeting based on all that additional information.
Thank you. Council President Grimes. Council Sacco, your hand up, you're just holding your head. The headache is coming in, Council President Grimes.
No, I, believe me, I feel that. I definitely am in favor of leaving the record open, giving the residents and the neighboring across the street housing development additional time to be noticed and be able to make their feelings heard on the matter. And I would also be for a continuance, at least two weeks from now, the 14 days, to give them an opportunity to have their voices be heard. And then based on that, we can hear the rebuttal from the applicant and then we can, you know, talk about this in the totality of the discussion as opposed to what we have tonight, which is sort of a partial, a partial accounting from the people that will be most affected by this.
So again, we're working your heart tonight, Chad. So for the, if we were to ponder the idea of leaving the record open for 14 days, is that something we have to vote on or is that something I just declare as mayor or as chair of this meeting?
So, again, I believe because you closed the hearing that you should have a vote to reopen the hearing. So you should have a motion and then a vote to reopen the hearing.
All right.
Okay, that would be the first step.
If I may, just mayor, just, oh, sorry, Sharon.
Well, I had a question about how long to leave the record open. It's been, it's my recollection that we don't leave it open for the full 14 days. We leave it open for seven days, but I'm looking at Chad, open it up for seven days and close it. So that gives the opportunity to put that testimony in the, that testimony in the packet and gives the applicant a chance to rebut, to rebut, but.
Yeah, the 14 days, I'm sorry if that was a little unclear. The 14 days is the total amount of time. That's seven days to keep the record open and then the seven-day period for the applicant to be able to supply a rebuttal.
Thank you.
The one thing I just wanted to clarify is that the one difference with the continuance would be that it would give the opportunity for those folks to testify orally as opposed to in writing. So whereas the continuance would, the continuance would not, or excuse me, leaving the record open would not notify anyone that the record is open. It just would be left open and so it would be incumbent on any folks here to let other people know that the record is still open. Whereas a continuance, we could, we could send another, we could send a mail notification that, you know, just announcing to people that this is being continued and reheard on whatever date it's heard on.
So either way, have to reopen the record, correct, Chad? Or have a motion to reopen the record?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm, I'll move to reopen the record.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and second to reopen the record on ordinance number 1464, I'm sorry. I don't know, I'm supposed to read this. To reopen the hearing for item number one, consideration of approval of the plan, map amendment PMA 21-001, 0001, adoption of ordinance number 1464-22. Any discussion on the motion? All right, so I'll start off with Council Hillier.
Aye.
Council Pratt.
Aye.
Council Brooks.
Aye.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council Sacco.
Aye.
Council President Grimes.
Aye.
And Chair Bill's aye, awesome. All right, step number one completed, Chad. All right, so what is the discussion between leaving the record open versus continuance? Council Brooks.
I'm in favor of a continuance.
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
So how do you properly motion second this, Chad?
So you would want a motion to continue it to a date certain, which I am assuming you'll want to be your next council meeting.
Is that okay with city staff, Sharon?
We have room.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make room, that's fine. Okay. That would be the 14th of February.
What a Valentine's gift.
Okay, so I make a motion to, or I move to make a motion to, for a continuance to February 14th, 2022.
And I'll second that motion.
I have a hand up from Mr. Angelo.
Just, thank you, yeah, I appreciate the discussion this evening. I just want to make clear on the continuance, we can submit testimony during that period, correct? But we don't get, as opposed to keeping the record open, we don't get a seven days to rebut or anything. So it's just everybody gets up to the February 14th hearing to provide additional testimony. Is that correct?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. And during that time, can we discuss potential conditions of approval?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McGrew.
I just, one clarification, I appreciate all the conversations and concerns and I get the difficulty of the decision. I think one of the things that I would appreciate some clarification from, either from Chad or, I think, Scott, the planner, was Commissioner Grimes was mentioning that she felt like there was no plan presented and it almost implied that we were trying to get sneaky. This, I think it was mentioned at the beginning of the process, this is just a plan map. And then there's no requirement. I mean, the owner wouldn't spend the money that it takes to try and put something together without some sense that it had a reason. That's what I understood the, you know, the development process is for. So I'm not arguing anything you're saying. I just want to be clear that the notion that there's no detailed plan put forward is just part of the process that was described by the city.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I have a motion and a second for a continuance of this hearing. So I'll go ahead and take a roll, so I'll start off with, picture's just changed again. Council Hillier.
Aye.
Council Pratt.
Aye.
Council Brooks.
Aye.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council Sacco.
Aye.
Council President Grimes.
Aye.
And I vote aye also. I just want to add, maybe I should add to the date certain that was selected, February 14th, our next council meeting. All right, so with that, we now move on to general business. Thank you everyone for your patience. Go out into your communities and get the word out about this being discussed again in two weeks.
Can I ask one clarifying question?
Sure.
Thank you. This goes back to something that Mr. Angelo asked. I was under the impression from what Chad said that leaving the record open gave seven days for additional testimony to come in and then seven days for rebuttal to be prepared? Is that incorrect? I just want to be really clear so people understand the timeframe for input. I want to be crystal clear on that.
Thank you for that question and I apologize, I didn't do a very good job of explaining it and I think Steve actually did a much better job. So you had two options before you, one was a continuance or one was leaving the record open. If you left the record open, that's a process where everything is in writing. People have seven days to submit something in writing, then the applicant has seven days to do a rebuttal. The council decided not to go down that road. Instead, they did a continuance, which basically just stopped the hearing for right now. And we continued it until your February 14th meeting, where we're just basically gonna pick up the hearing again, allow people to testify, allow the applicant to testify and to rebut and all that other kind of stuff. So the seven-day periods I've talked about four don't apply to this particular situation because you chose a different path.
Correct, but people, people that want their voices heard, they're welcome to come on the 14th of February and give their testimony in favor or against. They can also, in the ensuing two weeks, three weeks now, submit anything in writing that they want to, that the council to consider as part of our deliberation. So people aren't, don't have to come and testify in person. They can definitely submit written, personal testimony for us to look at.
You're 100% correct.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chad.
And just one thing to add, although we're not legally required to, our staff were committed to sending And, and just one thing to add, although we're not legally required to, our, as staff, we're committed to sending out mailed notice again to the property owners just so that those things are also understood for anyone who's not here this evening.
Yep. And it also allows the applicant to work with city staff in the interim for the two weeks, based on some of the input they heard today. Alright. Well, thank you everyone, now we'll move on to our next item. Uh, we move into general business, and our first item of general business is consideration of resolution number five five nine three dash twenty-two, accepting the city of Twolton Basalt Creek Parks and Recreation Plan. I saw Ross, there, there's Rich.
Yep, uh, thank you, mayor and counselors, I'm Rich Mueller, Parks Planning Development Manager. We're excited to present the Basalt Creek Park and Recreation Plan, which has been a year-long process with extensive community engagement. Joining us tonight are planning consultants Rachel Edmonds, project manager, who also used to live in Basalt Creek, and Bryce Merriman, principal from MIG. Rachel will now quickly go through the January tenth council work session presentation.
Thanks, Rich, um, can everyone hear me? Okay, great. Um, so tonight I'm going to present a condensed recap of the presentation MIG provided a couple of weeks ago to council. Um, as Rich said, my name is Rachel Evans, I'm the project manager. Um, I'll just jump into it to keep things, um, pithy. So the three hundred and sixty-seven acre Basalt Creek planning area shown here is on the south side of the city. It shares a boundary with both Wilsonville and Sherwood, and Interstate five to the east. Um, Basalt Creek, right here, roughly bisects the planning area in half. Um, planning performed in twenty eighteen identified nineteen hundred new employees working here and approximately uh, five hundred and seventy-five new households in the future. And as part of unincorporated Washington County, the planning area today lacks infrastructure and other basic utilities like water and sanitary sewer. There's few sidewalks and there's no parks and trails. So the parks, the Basalt Creek Parks and Recreation Plan makes it possible to expand parks and recreation facilities and services to this newest part of the city. Um, this park plan builds on previous planning efforts, both the twenty eighteen system plan and the Basalt Creek Comp Plan. Taking things one step further, the plan articulates the long-term vision and intention as it relates to parks, recreation, and trails development. Um, and at its foundation, it reflects major findings of those prior planning efforts. First, that Basalt Creek will be a major employment area for the city, as well as home for established and new residents. And second, to, to address unmet need in the area, it would be critical to connect each user group to parks and recreation in meaningful ways. Um, vision and goals for this parks plan also reflects earlier planning efforts and council priorities. Um, with this plan, Basalt Creek will be an inclusive community promoting equity, diversity, and access to parks. It will be environmentally active, sustainable, responsible, and forward-thinking, and it will contribute to a thriving and diversified economy. In all, the Basalt Creek Parks and Rec Plan process lasted about ten months, with community engagement taking place along the way. It was a sequential process, each task informing the next, and it was intended to provide the city the most updated and best information it needs to bring parks and rec to this newest part of the city in coming years and decades. Uh, the project team interfaced with the community using a variety of tools, meeting types, focus groups, and social media. Thousands of notifications were sent out, and all about seven hundred people in total engaged with this project. Uh, three online surveys were provided at project milestones. And outreach to the Spanish-speaking community was a critical aspect of engagement. All engagement materials were provided in Spanish and in English formats, and Spanish translation was provided at the Viva Twolton event in late August last summer. Um, the plan document also provides full written Spanish translation of the executive summary chapter. Uh, the plan document includes the following chapters, they closely reflect tasks undertaken by the project team. Not listed here are two plan appendices with additional detail and documentation of the community engagement and cost estimate. The site analysis step combined what we knew about the community and stakeholder needs and desires with the physical locations on-site that could support those facilities, activities, and programs. And this step illuminated the unique physical site characteristics of the Salt Creek and its, and the inherent opportunities and constraints, um, especially as it relates to planned land uses and natural areas on-site. Um, metros, the title thirteen lands were considered, as was site topography, which is a key consideration for building accessible parks and that, those which include features desired, uh, by the community. The, over the plan's development, we heard there were some concerns, the team wants to keep council apprised of these topics, um, and as, because they will likely reemerge as the planning process continues. Um, either Ross or Rich is going to provide a recap of those concerns.
Thank you, Rachel, so, uh, concerns we heard, and you can find detail of concerns in the appendices section of the attachment to the, uh, packet. So concerns like traffic, metal, uh, metro title thirteen lands, stormwater planning, sports complex, um, bridge and land acquisition, were some of the, some of the concerns we heard, we wanted to, to pull those out, talk about those here. Things like traffic and, and, uh, natural areas and, and resource areas, uh, those are really defined at, at time of development, um, and/or at time when there's a zone change, uh, considered. And those are things that, uh, we will, we will dig into at those, at those times, uh, not at the time that we're, that we're doing this, this planning work. Uh, the stormwater planning, so there, there's stormwater plan, uh, happening as well. So obviously synchronizing this work with that work is future, is definitely future work on, in front of us, ahead of us. And so we will, we will be looking forward to that, uh, synchronizing this, uh, concept with, with what's happening in stormwater. And then sports complexes, uh, we heard, we did hear from, uh, current residents and, uh, org- organizations serving our youth about the need for athletic fields and sports, uh, venues, and so we actually, um, have a meeting, a joint meeting scheduled, and you can find the information about that on our city website. It's a, a joint meeting of our city council and mayor, and, uh, the city of, city of Tigers, uh, mayor and council, and as well as the, uh, Tiger Twolton School Board, and that will take place on the thirty-first. And the conversation is around how we can better utilize, um, and work together, better, uh, utilize school district property and, and work together in partnership with the school district and the city of Tiger to, to help meet these sports needs. And then, of course, uh, concerns about the bridge, uh, the Salt Creek Parkway, and questions about land acquisition, and, and that, uh, response to that land acquisition question was that, is really that the city will work with willing sellers, uh, to acquire a future park plan. And so, um, again, uh, these concerns amongst others, you'll see in the appendices section, so back over to you, Rachel, thanks.
Great. Uh, thanks Ross, so an overall framework for the long-term parks and recreation development for Basalt Creek is shown in this diagram, um, highlighting three opportunity areas. The west side, shown in orange, is generally envisioned as a place for connections for employees, providing safe places to walk and bicycle before, during, and after work hours. There's also a connection to the proposed, uh, Tonkin Ice Age Trail Regional Trail. Uh, the east side is characterized by residential uses at various densities. The parks vision for the east side is supported by us with a series of future homeowners association parks and enhanced stormwater areas. And the central opportunity area, shown in the middle in green, uh, this area is going to support a new future neighborhood-style park built to serve residence, near, serve nearby residents and employees of the Salt Creek. The plan proposes a future ten-acre site accessible from the east side of Rams Ferry Road, where site conditions are less attractive for industrial investment and development. So the trails concept plan shown here shows how we connect these three park opportunity areas. Um, you should note that not all segments shown here may eventually be built, but what is shown reflects the city's long-term vision to connect people living and working into Twolton and the Salt Creek to their park system. Um, an off-street trail running north and south, so essentially this segment here, um, it runs along the top of the canyon's west side, and it's, uh, proposed to provide the community with some visual access to the Salt Creek and its wetlands from above, um, in order to minimize disturbance to the area. So once a site with a willing seller is identified, the future park will ideally connect to this north-south trail. So the last, uh, second to last slide here shows, uh, uh, it provides an overview of other details needed to advance parks and recreation um, in Basalt Creek over a fifteen-year horizon. The plan and the cost estimate information positions the city to strategically pursue grant and funding opportunities needed for both land acquisition and development costs. And an action plan outlines short, medium, and long-term steps along the way and the parties that need to be involved in the process. I'm going to kick it over to Ross to articulate some thoughts about, um, the consideration of acceptance and later adoption. But thanks again for providing this opportunity to present our work again, and we look forward to council's comments.
Thank, thank you, Rachel and Rich. Um, yeah, so, so what's, what's before you now is consideration of a resolution five five nine three two two, and it's an acceptance step, and this is a, an acceptance step, not an adoption step, and this is the same process we use for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And what it does do is provide, um, provide time, uh, for, uh, community members to continue, to continue to provide feedback and input. Um, this is, uh, this is not part of our comp plan, this is not a, a land use action. Um, at this step, this is purely an acceptance step. What it also does is provides direction to staff, it's an affirmation from, from, um, mayor and council, um, that, that this is, this is a, a generally a, a, a plan that, um, can move forward, and, um, at the same time, uh, tell staff that yes, we can, we can start to think about where, um, where some potential areas of acquisition for future parks might be, and, um, allows us to continue to work with, with landowners in the Basalt Creek area, um, through that process. So, uh, adoption would come at a later date, and like I said, we want to sink in with the stormwater work and with other, um, surrounding jurisdictions like, like the city of Wilsonville, and, and also, uh, Washington County as, as the bridge, uh, uh, conversation continues, so, uh, that's, uh, where we are, we would love to answer any questions you might have, and, um, so I'll pass it back to you.
That's, um, we're just open for questions.
Yep. Not sharing too quickly to each other, please.
Oh, sorry about that.
So the, the image there that you see, um, that Rachel just showed, um, it was actually on a visit to one of the properties in the Basalt Creek area, and so you can kind of see many people have not seen, actually seen Basalt Creek. And it's really, it's really a beautiful, um, wetland and creek and canyon area.
Alright, thank you. Uh, before we get into Q and A, even though this is not a public hearing, I'd like to open to the floor, to the public, uh, folks who would like to, um, give their opinion, either in favor or in opposition to the city accepting the Basalt Creek Parks and Recreation Plan. Alright, so hearing none, we'll move into Q and A. Any questions for Ross, Rich? Rachel? Alright, guess I haven't seen any questions. So, uh, is there a motion?
A motion that we adopt resolution number five five nine three dash two two.
I have a motion and second to adopt resolution five five nine three dash two two, and discussions on the motions? Alright, Council Pratt.
Aye.
Uh, Council Hillier.
Aye.
Council Sacco.
Aye.
Council Br- uh, Brooks.
Aye.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council President Grimes.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye also, the resolution is adopted unanimously. Alright, moving on to item number two of general business, consideration of resolution number five five nine five dash twenty-two, establishing recommendations for the I two oh five tolling project. I don't believe there's any kind of staff presentation, uh, this is something that Council Pratt asked for, and Craft and put together, staff, uh, did the wordsmithing on it. Uh, this was the basis of the letter that I sent to the O T C, uh, so we had it at their hearing in time so they could review it. Uh, so any discussion on this resolution? Council Pratt.
I, I just wanted to mention that, um, West Lynn and Lake Heswego also passed a very similar resolutions. So, um, I think it'd be great to have unity.
One of the things, uh, on that call I mentioned before with, uh, County Chair Smith was the unanimity, the clear message, and how all the cities were in unison on the four basic high topics that we need addressed by ODOT. Um, and so that, since we have unity and message and unity across those cities uh, impacted by a potential toll, I think it's, it's good, and this continues that effort. And as, um, I think we have ODOT coming here to visit us, uh, in a few weeks, so they'll have this in pocket, so we, they'll be well aware of our position and hopefully prepare for the, the peppering of questions we're going to give them. Council Reyes.
Uh, since we opened this, are we on discussion, I'm sorry, and, or is it Q and A only?
Oh, it's a discussion, this is a resolution.
Okay, no, yeah, I, I just think, I, I brought it up last time as I was driving to West, West Lynn, uh, to someone that was with me on, um, driving that day, and I was saying the tolling, and they're like, what, what do you mean, the tolling? I'm like, you haven't heard, it's been around for like five years. So could you please, uh, those who have been more engaged in the conversations, kind of give a little bit of a summary, so maybe people know that there is something happening about tolling, where we are right now, and if they have, they still can voice their opinion, where can they do that? I think it would be important, because I think people know, and then I talk to people, or I go to a coffee shop, and then I'm talking to people, and they're like, what do you mean, they told me, what, what? Uh, when did that happen, who's doing it, why is it happening? And I'm like, oh my gosh, I didn't know. So I, um, it would be kind of good to just bring back a little bit of a history, why, where we are right now, and how it started, because I think a lot of people, um, might not know exactly what's going on with that part of the, uh, city.
Okay. I'll take a crack at it. It's just like I said, the last two weeks have been two oh five tolling all day, all day, you know, night and day. So back, uh, House Bill two thousand and seventeen gave ODOT direction to look at the Portland Metro region uh, for potential tolling, uh, in order to pay for, uh, the interstate for I five two oh five, the Abbeinathie Bridge, because of a lack of funds coming in via the gas tax. So ODOT, uh, took that direction and started up a process of looking at how to implement tolling, and, uh, we've gone through several iterations of it. Um, they first focused on just two oh five and a small part of two oh five, which is between Twolton and the Abbeinathie Bridge. Uh, given the pushback from, uh, many electeds and from the community, they revised that plan, are now looking at a region-wide tolling plan, but still have the idea that the pilot project for the, uh, regional tolling would be that same swap of project for the regional tolling would be that same swap of 205 between Tuolotin and the Abernathy Bridge. They've been given, they've been doing a lot of outreach during COVID, which is one of the problems is that it's all been via Zoom and they haven't been in person, web sessions, web submissions. And that's one of the things they've been criticized by the both Washington County and Clackamas County electeds is lack of a very good communication plan. And then when they do hear comments, lack of clarity on what those jurisdictions are looking for. The folks, the cities are directly impacted by the pilot plan. The more an issue is diversion, you know, folks who are trying to avoid the toll, they will find any other way they can get between the points of interest on side streets. And if one of them, you know, that we'd see is Borland Road, that Borland Road continued on through West Lynn over Oregon City would be the way to avoid the toll on 205. And in a meeting the other day with Mayor Walters, they've got serious congestion through their main street, you know, nicely redeveloped Main Street in West Lynn, and it gets crowded right now. So with people using that route to divert, avoid paying tolls, the choke point, as President Grimes just said, it's also concerns with folk, emergency responders getting into Meridian Park Hospital because 65th can be impacted, Borland, Stafford, that whole region, people trying to get around. The mayor can be as petrified that 99E will become a parking lot once region-wide tolling is implemented because that will be the ultimate north-south route. So what happened just most recently is this was raised at JPAC to add, to amend the regional transportation plan. And JPAC punted this because the electeds there didn't feel it was ready for prime time, the plan from ODOT. So ODOT is coming back and going through communities with their latest and greatest plan. And I look forward to seeing it, but you know, we've had pieces, I've written pieces and you know, Tuolotin Live and stuff like that to get the message out about tolling. But as you're saying, Counsel Reyes, there's a lot of folks that have no idea. And so, you know, we've been banging the drum about diversion, about equity, and about lack of transit options east-west. And those are the three things we'd like to see as a council on this. And what's happening now is OTC, which is the Oregon Transportation Commission, can give direction to ODOT to change a plan, how to implement this. So we're heavily advocating at that level that we ask OTC to take into consideration what Clackamas County and the cities within Clackamas County feel that need to be addressed in ODOT's plan. I see Sherlin's had her hand up, I think. Did I miss something?
Well, I, no, that was great. I, just one additional nuance that I think is important is there are two kind of projects going on right now. So regionally, there's this regional mobility pricing concept, which is actually, which is tolling, congestion pricing, which is tolling region-wide. But they're taking this, this one segment of 205 and advancing it for tolling in order to pay for the Abernathy Bridge reconstruction. So the current kind of advocacy that I think is getting some attention is to pay for the Abernathy Bridge by, in a different way, maybe using the infrastructure funds from the feds. And so not jump-starting tolling on that particular piece so that, but paying for the Abernathy Bridge project and finishing up the regional mobility pricing project. And ODOT so far has said that money, there's not sufficient money in the infrastructure act to do that, but a number of people in jurisdictions are unconvinced of that. So I think that's our current best bet is to keep pushing on that. Like we support the Abernathy Bridge project, that's a needed project, but pay for it in a different way and let tolling take its, do the analysis for that entire corridor for tolling.
And there's also the talk of funding some funds from that same, you know, pot of money from the feds for the Boone Bridge. Wilsonville's very concerned about the Boone Bridge and maybe having the Boone Bridge and the Abernathy Bridge both addressed outside of tolling revenue, get the money like you're saying, Sherlin, now from the feds. And then, you know, when they implement tolling, because it's tolling region-wide, based on what I've heard lately, you know, it'd be all of 205 and pretty much I-5 around the Boone Bridge all the way up to North Going Street in Portland. And then you're going to have a separate toll and a separate discussion, the tolling of the new interstate bridge, which is separate than this one, that they're not together, two separate projects. Council Pratt?
A couple of things. One to Counsel Reyes, if you go to oregon.gov/odot/tolling, there's descriptions of the 205, the regional mobility tolling overview. And most important, there's a part up at the bottom from where it says, contact us so people can give their thoughts and opinions about it.
Yeah, I think you know all that, but I'm saying like, I feel like it's good to talk about it in this kind of setting if anyone can listen to it because I was really surprised when it were, I was just, for me, it's what I know, I know because I'm here and I hear you all. I read some of it, but not everybody's engaging. I think it's good that, I mean, this thing, once it happens, they're going to find out. They're going to start asking questions like, how did this happen? Or when did this happen? Or, you know, I feel like that's really important for the community that stays on record. So if they want to go back and read, hey, that one meeting on January 24th, we mentioned it. Go back and read that. Yeah.
Because the other folks, if they don't want to go to the website and they're, you know, they're firmly against tolling, I say that two people they should talk to is their Oregon representative, which for most of us is Rachel Prusak, and then their state senator, which is Rob Wagner. Contact their offices, give a phone call, send an email, stay in their opposition to ODOT because the legislators, well, who brought this, brought this to us. Council Pratt?
Oh, I just want to say, and part of the frustration that's kind of somewhat addressed in this is that, you know, the questions keep getting asked about the equity or the regional transportation plan, or you know, if they're meeting the objectives and ODOT's come back as always, well, give us the go-ahead and we'll do this, we'll do the study. So it's, we're kind of asking like, come to us with answers before you ask us just to give a free-for-all to do all this. It's, you know, we want, we want to know. And then we also address one that Counsel Prusak reminded me, the section four is that they explicitly address whether they're going to be used, you know, these funding sources, they say they're going to pay for these improvement projects like the Abernathy Bridge, but then they don't see what happens with these tolling funds after that, when these projects are completed. So it's asking them to, you know, address whether this will be used for future capital projects because, you know, there's no answer. They're just not giving answers on what.
And that's one of the points of the meeting I was in was, there's no sunset on tolling anywhere in the legislation. So as a former New York State resident, tolling came in and never left.
It never left. Yeah. So that's the thing that people need to realize that once it's there, it's there for probably forever. And also there's, yeah, once it's there, people might want to come and say, why did this happen? Well, this is an opportunity for people to come out there and speak about their opposition or what they think in the long term. Because the last time I attended one of these meetings, they were saying, what happens after we pay for all that? And we're in Tuolotin, we're collecting, you're collecting money that exit or during that city limit. Are we getting anything as a city from, you know, because the inconvenience and maybe build a better road or better way of doing things? So I remember that was the last conversation that I heard when I attended one time, but I think it's good for people to know that, you know, you gotta call your representatives and let them know what's going on and how you feel. You can see what happened and if it happens, it's going to be there for a long time.
And one of the other fears, you know, we talked about diversion is, okay, so ODOT decides, yes, we'll acknowledge it's going to be diversion on Borland Road and in conjunction with Counsel Reyes just said, okay, then you need to improve Borland Road before you can implement tolling. And so you're going to have to find the money to fix it before you implement it because we're not going to have you trying to fix it when tolling's already happening because it's too late.
Yeah, because that's everyone's best, worst nightmare is like diversion and road construction at the same time.
Exactly.
I mean, it'll shut our city down.
Counsel Brooks?
I just want to thank Counsel Pratt for bringing this and Mayor for advocating on this. And I think, you know, for Tuolotin, everyone here is really speaking to it. We already have such a big traffic problem here and a couple places where you can still drive around, it won't be that way anymore. And I can't imagine that there isn't a way to fund things without creating more gridlock in our city. So I just find this, you know, just a very bad idea for Tuolotin. And yeah, we need to reinforce our infrastructure in so many ways. And, you know, and we have, we have a tax problem in our country in a big way. And there's some things that we really need to think about and support so that we can have the bridges and the infrastructure that we need without resorting to making our communities unlivable. So I, I don't think it's good for the community, for getting around, for safety, for health, for livability, for any of it, strongly posed. So I appreciate you bringing this. Thanks.
All right. So you, I was going to say, I was going to give Valerie, sorry, Counsel Pratt the, you know, the floor to make the motion and I'm sure Counsel Grimes will second it.
Okay. I'd like to motion that we adopt resolution number 5595-22.
And I will second that and also thank you both for your leadership on this. Outstanding.
All right. So I have a motion and a second for, to adopt resolution 5595-22. Any discussions on those motions? All right. Counsel Pratt?
Aye.
Counselor Hillier?
Aye.
Counsel Sacco?
Aye.
Counsel Brooks?
Aye.
Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel President Grimes?
Aye.
And I vote aye also. That moves us into items removed from consent, which we had none. Any council communications? All right. So what I'll do is ask for a motion for adjournment of this meeting. Remember, we have a TDC meeting right after this, so don't go away. So we have a motion to adjourn the city council meeting.
So.
All right. So I'm just going to raise a hand to all those in favor of adjourned this meeting. Good. All right. So let's switch our hats over. Let me change my agendas. All right. And so now I'll call to order the Tuolotin Development Commission meeting of January 24th, 2022. First item on our agenda is public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the commission on any item that's not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments for about three minutes. If there's anyone left in this Zoom meeting who would like to comment on something that's not on our agenda tonight at the Tuolotin Development Commission, this would be that time.
No one, no one in the Zoom meeting, no one at the center.
All right. Okay. Then we'll move on to consent. Consent, are those items considered routine? Will be adopted by one motion unless someone on the commission would like an item removed and heard later separately tonight. Tonight, we only have one item. And as consideration of approval, the Tuolotin Development Commission meeting minutes of October 25th, 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Okay.
I have a motion, second to adopt the consent agenda as read. Any discussion on those motions? Counsel Pratt?
Aye.
Counsel Hillier?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Sacco?
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Reyes?
Yes.
Commissioner Grimes?
Aye.
And I vote aye also. That brings us to general business. We have one item of general business tonight. It has consideration of resolution number 631-22 of the Tuolotin Development Commission approving the annual financial report for fiscal year 2020, 2021. And there's Mr. Hudson waiting patiently. Welcome, Donna.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I don't have a lot to say. The annual financial report in front of you is required by state statute for us to, for the commission to prepare it, for the commission to approve it. If it is approved by you this evening, we will then file it with the city and send a copy to the other taxing districts. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions for Donna. Commissioner Pratt?
Hi, Don. It looks like you're going to have a capital outlay of most of this money. So I'm just wondering like if the interest isn't going to be exactly 10 grand, are we going to be able to close this by the end of the next fiscal year? Because you know, I love a $1,000 audit.
Yeah. It's the Herman Road Extension Project is the most of that. And I don't recall off the top of my head exactly the end date of that, of whether it would be done. It won't be done by the end of fiscal year 21, 22. So you'll see it budgeted again in 22, 23.
And I was kind of, so people know, I was kind of chuckling at Commissioner Hillier squinting at his screen real close.
Well, I forgot, I forgot my computer glasses at the office. I literally cannot see the screen. It's just a one big bug. So, bad day.
Any other discussion on the resolution? Any questions for Donna? All right. So do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to improve, to approve, resolution number 631-22?
Second.
I have a motion, second to approve, resolution 631-22. Any discussions on the motion? All right. Commissioner Pratt?
Aye.
Commissioner Hillier?
Aye.
Commissioner Sacco?
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Reyes?
Yes.
And I vote, oh, sorry, Commissioner, Commissioner Grimes?
Aye.
And I vote aye also. With that, that brings us to adjournment. All those in favor of adjourned, raise your hands. As aye, all right. Well, good evening, everyone. It was, what, three and a half hours? Well, we actually started at five. It's been a long haul. Appreciate your time and patience tonight and have a good week.